It was sort of, yeah. It should be fine, hopefully. All right, it should be good now.
All right. Excellent. Well, let's roll. Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM and I call the city council meeting of December 17th, our last of the year.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Mayor Proten Thark.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Hill. Councilmember Luna Leal.
Councilmember Hill is here.
Oh, yes, he is.
And I'm here, too.
Perfect. I do see him online. Uh, councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Uh, just for the record, councilmember Hill, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I'm present.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
And I'm here, too.
And Best.
And, sorry, councilmember Best.
Because we, let's all sing along, Dave the Best for the last. You're welcome. It's not the last of the year, I promise.
Oh, my God. I am, I'm injured by no one.
Okay. Thank you all. But it is, you'll join me for the, uh, optional pledge of allegiance or moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution, express this one nation, one nation. Thank you very much. Um, I'd like to move on to approval of the agenda. It seems very modest this evening.
Best, that is.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, uh, let's move on now to public comments for items not on the agenda. Um, we're gonna mix this up a little bit than my usual spiel. If, for the purpose of record-keeping, when anyone comes up to make a public comment, if you would state your name slowly and clearly, and whether or not you reside within the city limits. We don't really care about your address specifically, okay? Everybody remember that? All right. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to give public comment prior to signing the agenda in your lobby?
Well, exactly.
Do you wanna give comments?
I would love to.
Would you come up to the, to the lecture, please? Thank you.
Uh, my name is Mary Lobby. I live in the city limits. Thank you. Uh, I really would like to compliment the mayor and the city council and the city staff on the letter, uh, to the county regarding the animal shelter. Well, I thought it was extremely well crafted. I thought it was, uh, very, very well, um, articulated in terms of, of position and, and some of the misinformation that had been coming at us, uh, from the county. So, that's it. I just wanted to thank you very much. I thought it was extremely well done.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in chamber who would like to give a comment? Yes, perfect.
Hello, Carly Stingler. I do live within the city limits. Um, I've spoken to another castes before. I'm just here tonight as a citizen. And I'd like to, um, just acknowledge that I know council is looking into how to protect and support our immigrant community, and then that you're considering, um, possibly a resolution, talking about sanctuary status, welcoming city language, things of that nature. I think that is an extremely important and worthy cause, and I'm really thankful that our council members are taking that up. Um, it's something, as you all know and don't need me to tell you, it is something that is creating a lot of, um, fervor in our community. And so I really applaud your efforts at, at creating a safe welcoming space for immigrants in our community who have been here for decades, um, to create essence of belonging for the folks. I am, um, noticing what I've observed through my attendance at various meetings throughout the community is just a sense of fear and concern from most everyone involved in conversation around this. And I think these are really, really big questions that will take a lot of consideration to do really well. Um, I think that the town hall meeting coming up, uh, or any meeting where it's being discussed, I'd love to see city council put out really clear, specific questions that are being addressed, so that public who are attending know what is being talked about. One thing that I've noticed is that public meetings have become the space for people to just talk about immigration generally, and that's created a lot of space for, um, really harmful comments. And I think city council would do well to, to put out a really specific question. Here's what we're answering. Here's some specific data from other communities that are similar to us. Here's the impact of a resolution. Here's the impact of an ordinance. Here's the impact of doing nothing. What does that do for the law enforcement? What does that do for schools? What does that do for the hospitals? We have that data available to us, and I would really like to see these conversations be very data-driven and very specific, so that we can reduce harmful rhetoric around what people think about immigration, because we're talking about protecting and supporting our whole community. And so I'd love to see that data in future conversations. Thanks.
Steve, go ahead.
My name is Steve Costashe. I live in the city. Uh, I'd like to briefly comment on the, um, animal shelter issue. Um, I feel that my perspective is, is previous administration incredibly weakened our, weakened by them. This placed an incredible burden on the sheriff's department that they're, I think, been professionally trying to address and take care of, but the city should be running its own police department and not be relying on the sheriff and, uh, straining their funding. So this translates to a bone of contention, which is the animal shelter. And so I think some of this, um, stress is crystallizing around the animal shelter. So not to recognize that in the past, the prior administration incredibly weakened our police department is horrendous mistake. Um, as far as the immigration issue goes, this is an immigrant, an issue that a lot of people would like to stay neutral on. But, um, my experience knowing what gay members could do that are investing in a poor neighborhood, before that happened in my neighborhood, got me aware of what was going on. And all of a sudden, I became painted as the guy that hated gay people. This brought incredible backlash to me. And, um, the problem is, I see the same thing happening with the immigration issue. There'll be people that won't wanna talk about their fears and their regret, how they feel, what they see, because there'll be incredible, strong backlash against them for speaking out, possibly against, um, being so pro-integration. So I think it's gonna take government, um, some consciousness to really weigh the issues and just not go with the emotive flow of the, uh, majority that speaks. Thank you, Carly.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in chambers who would like to comment? That's always amazing.
Hi, my name is Megan. This is Patrick, and I do live within the city limits. And I just wanna speak to the same topic as Carly. I know this is a really challenging topic. There's a lot of difficulties with immigration that come down from the federal level, and I really respect how much time I'm putting into being thoughtful about this. Um, and thinking about what you can do locally. I've seen a lot, like Carly said, concern and, uh, honestly, like love for people's community, for their family, for their neighbors. That love and concern is what makes Ludville so unique and a lovely place to live. And I just hope you all keep in mind that that concern is to a extent to immigrants, both documented and undocumented. They're a really important part of this community. They, our businesses depend on them. They're our neighbors, our friends, and we are considering what we want Ludville to look like, something that is comfortable for everyone. That is the city that I love and love being a part of, and I want that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to give comments for items not on the agenda?
We do, we do have two people online. Uh, the first person to raise their hand was, um, Carly.
Let me.
Or, sorry, Christie and Joel.
Let me, let me first just make sure. Is there anyone else in chambers who would like to give comments?
I apologize.
Go ahead, Chris.
Hi, I'm Grayson Cooper. I no longer live in city limits, but I'm sorry, you no longer be your neighbor, I missed it. Um, but still a proud member of this community. Um, I'm also here to speak in support of sanctuary city status. Um, and I go much of, uh, actually, all, I'll just say all, Carly and Amanda's comments here. I think it's really important, um, that we are, we are conscious of our impacts that we have on our community and, and as Carly and Amanda have stated, I think that we're all coming to that from this place. And I think for us, um, for me, that it's important that we really center people who are most impacted and allow them to, as a substantial and part of our community, to be able to live without fear, to, to know that their community, and particularly their government, is here to support and to serve them. Um, not to police them for things that, quite frankly, the Supreme Court under the, um, under the equal protection clause, um, of the Fourteenth Amendment has clearly stated time and again that, um, also applies to, um, all of our residents regardless of their documentation status. So, Piler v. Doe, nineteen eighty-two, clearly stated that, um, children, regardless of their documentation status or illicit, their parents' documentation status, are entitled to a free public primary and secondary education. Something they cannot be denied, it's a right. And Arizona versus the United States, twenty twelve, clearly stated that residing, existing in the United States without documentation is not a crime. So, I, I certainly have heard, you know, the concerns that people have of, um, you know, other things that might be invited into this community as a result of sanctuary status. I don't think that anyone is saying who's supporting sanctuary city that they are saying, you know, let's, let's avoid, um, or, you know, let's go easy on crime. Crimes have punishments. Those punishments are their deterrents and those consequences in and of themselves. We don't need to deny people their due process rights, um, through a federal agency that may or may not, again, be a result of individual targeting or discrimination. Um, so thank you for your time. Thank you for considering, considering it's really an important topic, um, to be able to really keep our community members safe, um, to feel a part of our community and to feel that Ludville is a place where we really just value our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Grayson. Last call on comments for items not on the agenda from the people in chambers. Okay, now let's turn to online. Um, you mentioned.
Um, Christie and Joel were the first people to raise their hands.
Christie and Joel, please.
Hello, city council, and thank you so much for allowing us to speak with you today. We do not live in city limits. Um, and as you know, we are traveling the country right now. Um, but we wanted to just, um, come in and say a couple of things. We applaud you for, for considering this, um, this sanctuary city, and we wanted to kind of put a little bit of a personal face on it for you. Um, the last time that mass deportations was done in the nineteen thirties, about sixty percent of the folks who were deported were US citizens. Um, so that could directly affect my family. Um, people were deported exclusively on what they looked like. I'm not saying that that's a hundred percent going to happen, but it is a hundred percent a fact. Um, and then another thing I wanted to remind you about, you guys have worked with me on, on quite a few policy and systems change adjustments over the years. And if you think back on them, there's almost always fear tactics that the opposition uses, um, to say, this is why we should not do this. And, um, and I think that that is looking pretty clear, um, to me in what I'm, what I'm seeing some of the opposition bring forward. And so I would just encourage you, um, to, to be bold and to be brave, um, in moving forward with this. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, as a community, we have told our Latinee community members that you are important to us. We value you. We want you in leadership positions. Um, and your, your Latinee leadership in Christian Luna Leal brought this forward. He is part of this community. He brought this decision to you, and I think you should trust him and his guidance. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Christie. Have fun wherever you are. Um, I think it was it Mateo.
Mateo was next, yes.
Mateo, please unmute and give us your comment.
Uh, hello, how's it going, folks? Uh, my name is Matteo Lozano. Um, I'm actually closing on my house, uh, tomorrow. Um, it's going, within city limits, obviously. Uh-huh. And, um, I, I work with the, um, with, uh, Bolsasunias de las Montañas. It's a organization that works to uplift the Latino community. And I, uh, I'm also personally a DACA recipient. Um, and I, when, when the Trump elections, uh, I call them the Trump elections. When they came by, um, it, it, uh, it really solidified a fear in me, one that I just am not quite ready to, to, to digest. And it, it really helps a lot to know that there's folks in this community that are, um, uh, are thinking about folks like me and are willing to consider, um, a policy that, um, will, will, will help protect folks like me, um, so that I can continue living in this community and so that I can see my son be raised here, and so I can see him take his first steps in the house that I just bought. Um, so I just wanted to thank you again, and I hope that, um, this comes to a good resolution with, um, with, with, with plenty of, of positive debate um, and lots of data. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mateo. Okay, and Gloria, Griz, please unmute and give us your comment.
Yes, thank you, city council, and like others, I would like to thank, can you guys hear me okay?
Now we can't. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Others, I would like to thank city council for considering, um, passing an ordinance or resolution. Um, and just echo the remarks that have been shared as well. Um, first, the misunderstandings and misconceptions about immigrant community in Ludville, um, as it relates to crimes. Um, I have shared this in the commissioners' meetings as well. Um, the immigrants that we are here to advocate for, um, are, are immigrants that we all know and live in Ludville, and they represent, um, documented and undocumented. Um, and they are, are, you know, neighbors, um, kids that go to school, um, our workforce. Um, and as others have shared as well, there are many reasons of why people get caught up in a broken immigration system, um, that, you know, um, even if there are legal paths, um, take a very long time. Um, and there are many situations that, again, people get caught up in. But while they are, um, exploring those avenues, by all means, people are working and, um, there are misconceptions as well about the, um, you know, statements that people, um, get free handouts or they get public benefits. Um, that is not true. Um, undocumented people, um, for the most part, cannot get, um, many benefits, and, um, even documented folks are fearful sometimes of getting public benefits. Um, so again, there are a lot of misconceptions, and, um, like Christie said, um, you know, it, it's easy to say that, um, immigrants are criminals. Um, crime occurs within all populations, and as the remarks have been, have been shared, there are due processes for those, um, types of situations. Um, so again, I would just advocate that, um, the immigrant community that lives in Ludville are people that work productively. They are our neighbors and productive citizens of, um, Lake County and Ludville. Um, and for the record, I'm forty-six cops dot court. I am not in city limits. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Is there anyone else online who would like to give comment for items not on the agenda? Andrew, I can only see a partial list. Can you let me know if somebody pops up?
I do not see anybody.
Seeing none. Uh, let's, thank you all very much, um, for those comments. Let's move on to the consent agenda, which includes a series of minutes. This is what caught up with minutes. Thanks to Bree, staff, um, and also a couple of fairly straightforward resolutions. If there's nothing anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda, or entertain a motion to.
Best moves to approve the consent agenda.
On a second. All in favor?
Uh.
Thank you, Tim. All right, let's move on to presentations. We are starting our presentations with a presentation regarding economic development services by Retail Strategies. I think I've stranded us online this evening.
And I just, I'll introduce, uh, Lacey, uh, Lacey Box from Retail Strategies. Uh, she is joining us tonight to talk about the potential economic development services that Retail Strategies could offer to the city of Ludville. And, uh, in, we have discussed two topics in particular, the opportunity for, uh, grocery. So attracting a second grocery store and hotel, but that is not the limit of the discussion. So feel free to ask questions outside of those parameters as well. So, uh, Lacey, and I think Lacey's gonna share her screen.
Yes, yes. Can y'all see and hear me okay first?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. I'm gonna share my screen also. Okay, are you seeing my screen now?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, it says Retail Strategies in Ludville. Make sure I had the right screen up. Okay, well, thank you, uh, for having me this evening. Um, it's great to, to see many of you again. Um, I've had the pleasure, uh, talking with some of the city leadership, um, visiting the city, um, earlier this year, um, and, uh, starting this discussion about a, um, economic development program um, that we have at Retail Strategies. And I'm gonna go to, go through this a little quickly, but the city has, um, a copy of this presentation, um, for you to reference, and as well, I will gladly answer questions. Um, but I do wanna be prominent of your, um, time this evening. Um, a bit about us, um, you know, we're trusted, uh, across the country, um, to work with cities just like Ludville, um, to understand commercial real estate deals and transactions, and to be proactive if they're trying to recruit in businesses and development. Um, you know, you heard, um, two of the, the focus categories might be, um, grocery and hotel. Um, but there's all other types of, um, businesses that we would bring to the city's attention that we see are opportunities. We specialize, um, in, in rural, secondary, and tertiary markets, just like yours. Um, USDA has named us a, um, technical assistance provider, uh, for rural communities. Um, as well, the National League of Cities, um, has trusted us to develop a programming and content to educate, um, elected officials and city leaders just like yours on, um, how to drive economic activity in their rural markets. Um, so that's just a, a bit about us. Do you understand, you know, where we're coming from and, and why we do this? Um, we've been doing this, um, since twenty eleven, so coming up on, on almost fourteen years. Um, and do this all across the country, um, with the, I said, a focus on rural, secondary, and what we call tertiary markets. Um, but why do we do this? Is, is, you know, oftentimes, every city like Ludville has goals, um, and, or has needs, um, to bring in, um, you know, tax revenue, to bring in, um, quality of life amenities, like additional, uh, fresh food options and grocery, to create jobs. Um, but often they are challenged, um, with, uh, you know, not enough time to dedicate to this. Y'all have a very full agenda just tonight as well, um, of other things that the city is focusing on. And so, you know, business recruitment, um, in, in, in retail attraction, um, is something that is a, a full-time job for us, which I'll, which I'll talk about. Um, and often, cities don't have the right contacts and knowing who the players are, um, and that make decisions with these types of, um, business location. And so that's why we do what we do. Um, our, our process is, um, it's been proven, like I said, for almost fifteen years. Um, we call it discover, connect, advance. Um, and I'm gonna go through those, um, so you understand how we come up with our, um, uh, retail strategy that is, that would be custom for the city of Ludville. Um, market analysis, we have to know, you know, beyond, um, what we hear from the community. Let us do some analysis and see where people are coming from, um, outside of your city to come shop. Where are they spending their dollars? And what types of, um, retail are they going into? Um, this, what you see here on the map, um, obviously you can see the city and the municipal boundaries. This is what we would call a customized trade area, which shows that people that are shopping currently at that Safeway that you have in the city. Um, this is some stats about where they, um, where they reside. So we're looking at mobile data, which is anonymous aggregate, twelve months rolling data of, of cellphone users that we're able to geo-fence and look at specific businesses or buildings, and, and, and look at, again, at an anonymous aggregate level, who they are and where they're spending their money. Um, so this is the, the Safeway that you have, and you can see some stats on, you know, how far away people are coming, the day, um, of the week that they shop, the hour that they're going into, and how it ranks versus other grocery stores in the area. And so that's how we determine that trade area is looking at, again, the residents are, are your top priority, of course. Um, but also there's others in the county and even, uh, other counties, and of course, all of your, your tourists that come visit that make up the trade area. And what the, what we're able to do with that next, um, is what we call look at a leakage or a gap. Um, and what this helps us determine is, is putting some dollars to the actual, you know, need. And so, um, this analysis shows us that there's about a hundred and twelve million dollars every year that the city is losing on retail sales. And so that means that people that live in Ludville and that live in the county are spending a hundred and twelve million dollars outside the city every single year on retail, um, with a lot of those, um, uh, broken down here you, that you can see. Um, and that's kind of what we start, again, putting some quantity to the need, but that's just the first piece. The next thing that we do, this is a, a sample, is we will say, who does the city look like on paper from a demographic standpoint, from a consumer behavior standpoint? And then what types of businesses or what developers are doing projects in those communities that haven't done a, um, a business, um, or development in Ludville? That's what's, the next step is called avoid, and that helps us generate, again, some initial analysis to say, here's some opportunities that we see. But the big piece of that is we're gonna present our findings, and, and I'll talk about that in, in a little more detail in a second. But part of our, our discovery is, is, is wanting to know, what are you, you know, there in the community, what are you hearing from your, from your constituents? I participated in a food access coalition, um, meetings, uh, a month ago, and was part of some of the, the feedback process for that, that community engagement. We're gonna do some, um, some other sampling and surveying in the community, because we weren't here. Um, you know, obviously, you know what's, what's going on. You're the local pulse of what's happening. But we're gonna take that and help you determine what's practical and what's feasible and attainable, and then present that back to you. Um, the big piece of this, though, is looking at the real estate, because every community, like I says, has wants and needs. But if we can't help determine where a specific business can go in your city, then it's not going to, um, uh, be able to attract them, because every single retailer and developer has a very, very specific site selection criteria. And we know that with Retail Strategies. That's why we do this, is to go through and determine what are the specific variables that every hotel brand, every grocery store brand, they have a specific criteria, like a checklist. Do they buy land or do they lease it? How many acres or square footage? Do they do first generation, second generation, third generation? A lot of different real estate terms. But they do that before they look at every piece of property. And we know that for all these different brands. And then what we do is we catalog everything in the city, available property, off-market property, things that might Available property, off-market property, things that might come up for development vacancies. And start matching it up with the site selection criteria of all of those brands. That's the biggest piece, I'd just say, of this puzzle, is matching the right real estate. To the right opportunity. And that's how we create your customized retail strategy for Leadville. It's looking at the research that we do, the input and the community vision, feedback that we get. We come there, we drive, I've already been there a few times, but we come there, we drive, we inventory, we document, we photograph. Every piece of property, like I said, what's there now, look at what could be there. Talk to property owners, get to know the, the, the sale price, getting to know everything there. So combine the data, combine the, the real estate, combine your vision. And that's how we create the retail recruitment plan and strategy. So that takes about a hundred days of us to do all of that research, and it's a very dynamic back, back and forth process. And then we present our findings back to, to the city leadership, about seventy pages. But we go through it and say, here are the specific grocery store brands, the specific hotel brands. And other retail restaurant and commercial businesses that we know are growing, they're looking for new locations in Colorado. And that, most importantly, you have a site or a potential site that matches what their location criteria is. And then we present that to you, because your buy-in is vital. And we are not going to try to recruit or contact any brand or any developer. That you do not want in the city, which is why we present our findings back to you. And again, it's a discussion, it's a dialogue. Of us saying, who is what's attainable, what's feasible, what's practical and aspirational? Are these the types of businesses that you want to see in your city? We see that, that you're losing money on these types of businesses, well, you don't have them in Leadville. That they'll add quality of life amenities to your residents. And that these are the types of businesses that we think, based on our analysis, but again, you're, you're our partner and you're the local expert. And so once we come into agreement on specific grocery store brands, hotel brands, that we've presented to you. What we do is we have a team that dedicates all day, every day. This is what they're doing. As I mentioned, time is, is a huge piece of this puzzle. And so that this team is talking to the specific decision makers of that grocery store brand. Whether they have an in-house real estate director, a developer that they partner with, a franchise owner. That they utilize to make their site criteria. So our team is doing this outbound every day on your behalf. But because we've been doing this, like I said, for so many years, and we work with so many communities like yours. We get asked all the time by these decision makers and these site selectors to help them find their next site. So as much as we're doing outbound, it's coming inbound also. We go to retail conferences, which you can see some photos here, it is networking, it is, you know, talking real estate deals. But then also, a big piece of our partnership is acting as your objective third-party real estate consultant. So advising the city on all things, economic incentives, financing, public-private partnerships with developers. Land, property acquisitions, zoning, annexation, right-of-way. Anything that the city has a question on about commercial real estate, your team is here to partner with you. As well, we're connecting with the local brokers there in your community, the local property owners. And the local developers, and working with them to, again, help bring businesses that the city wants into the city. And I mentioned when you have a dedicated team, that is myself and three others that are dedicated to working Colorado and the western states. And this way you have a dedicated point of contact, contacts, they each have different duties. To focus their time and maximize their, their resources. But this gives you, also, we have sixty-five employees. Here's just some of our executive team, our marketing support. That would be working, you know, and supporting what the Colorado team is doing every day. And then also, as much transparency and communication, as I mentioned, is vital to this partnership. So what we do, like I said, you have the team, so you always know who you can call, email, text for questions and feedback. But we also have a program called FaceCamp, very easy to use, but you can log in twenty-four seven. And, and see what's happening, see what communications and feedback we're getting, that we're posting. And so city leadership has access to that. We also present a quarterly business review, which is a recap of the conversations and any updates. We can present this to council and do redacted versions, and when I say redacted, it's because. As we say in our industry, loose lips sink ships, so we have to keep some specific brands in, in projects. Redacted until they're at the point that they can be announced publicly. And then, you know, the hotel piece was mentioned, you know, the county invested in a feasibility study in twenty twenty-three. These do have a life shelf of about two years, so time is of the essence to, to, to utilize this study. What that study does, what that study did was determines in specific hotel brands, sites. Performers as, as to their likelihood of success. And the reason why, like I said, these might expire in about two years, is financing deals, these things change. So what we're gonna do is take that study and incorporate it with everything that we're, we're gonna be doing. And then again, talk to those specific brands that are recommended, that the developer, the real estate director. And, and again, it's not just saying, hey, we think Leadville's a great place to, to open your location, which it is. But it's putting the specific site in front of the specific person with the specific message at the right time. Few last things, so we're gonna do the market analysis, like I mentioned, all that research. All of that data is presented to the city and it is public. We always, always, always encourage city leadership to share it with every business owner, chamber, main street businesses. As much as we're gonna use it for outbound. It is very, for outbound attraction, it is very vital information for business retention and expansion opportunities. And then, you know, why is this a partnership and why does this take so, so long for, for you to see a business open? You know, the typical, this is a timeline of maybe a real estate deal. And this is a three-year process. Most public companies, if they're publicly traded, they have to answer to Wall Street. They have to answer to their investors, and there's a lot of different steps in this process. And at any time in this process, if something goes. Skewy or something goes, hey liar, that's why Retail Strategies is here, to make sure every piece of this step falls into place at the right time. Because there's a lot of variables, a lot of things can be changing, a local property owner can make a, make a change. There's a lot of variables, and again, going back to, it's very time-consuming to do this, which is why. We have a whole company and a whole team that does this for cities. Again, a very proven process, Discover Connect Advance, which again is putting the right site in front of the right decision maker at the right time. And I'm just gonna touch on a few of the success stories or, or communities that we partner with case studies. And anything that you see here, realize that's what that city wanted, and that's what they needed. So if I, you know, go through some of these slides and say, that's not the brand that we want. Again, this is what, what this community needed and what their analysis showed was attainable for them. Like, for example, Claremore, Oklahoma, again, they had a need for grocery. Aldi was one that, through a multi-year process, again, we found the right site for an Aldi. As well as Tractor Supply and Tropical Smoothie, a few other businesses that we recruited to them. But again, this is what Claremore wanted and needed and what was attainable for Claremore. I love the quote that they did, it says, I've told every city leader that has called to ask me for a testimonial, is you'd be foolish not to try. Because they saw how valuable our partnership was. Another one, Dell City, Oklahoma, also had a need for grocery. Again, their analysis and their market was a Save-A-Lot, which is a value food store. That does not mean that we only recruit Save-A-Lots, you know, but that is what Dell City needed. Again, a testimonial from their community development director is that success is not just the store openings. It's how much interest we brought to their site and the conversations that we had with them on their path. El Campo, Texas, a lot of different businesses, especially within the restaurant was needed for this community. But what, why I wanted to highlight this one is, again, the testimonial and the quote from their economic development director. Is by saying that, you know, by partnering with us, she had this whole team of people working, you know, for her. Things that she's not able to do, you know, as a, as a two-person economic development team. Plainview, Texas, another one, again, this one was a, a long, a long-time partnership. But, you know, what they said is that the investment that we brought back into their city. More than paid for our partnership in the ROI. And again, these are some specific grocery store brands that we recruited to specific cities that we work with. But again, these brands are what they wanted and needed, that does not mean that's the only ones that we have relationships with or the only ones that we. You know, are, are able, are, are recruiting, but that's what those specific cities had the, the match for. And then lastly, just time to, to recap, before I open it up for questions. Again, we've been doing this with, with about a thousand communities for the past fifteen years, our focus is markets just like yours. We were formed to help cities, you know, like, like yours, be proactive if they wanted to understand how commercial real estate development happened. And a proven process of doing this for retail and hotels, as well as a lot of other commercial businesses. Sixty-five plus team members, but you would have a dedicated team of four that works in Colorado and our western states. And then really is that, for lack of a better term, rolodex of all of our contacts. To say, these are the decision makers, and again, putting the right site in Leadville in front of them with the right message. And so I would like to open it up for questions, I said, I know I went through that at a, at a quick pace. The city does have this presentation, but I wanted to be very cognizant of your time in the agenda this evening.
And Mayor, before we do questions, I know that we have Mark Nguyen here from the Food Access Coalition. And I would just actually ask, we give her half a second to talk about how her organization could partner for. Purposes of community engagement, and then questions can be directed to everyone.
Okay, I'd like to give Mark Nguyen more than half a second.
Okay, well, awesome, yeah, thank you, Lacey, for your presentation. Yeah, I wanted to speak tonight because I am in favor of partnering with Retail Strategies. Yeah, I facilitated the Food Access Coalition since about twenty twenty, I'm also getting my master's degree in food systems, so I spend like sixty hours a week. Thinking about this. And, yeah, to me, the biggest asset, I think, is, yeah, the level of data and advocacy that they can offer us. The, yeah, the amount of expertise it would take someone in this room, where someone in the city staff to be able to do what they can do would take years. You know, we have known the first time the Food Access Coalition did a food system assessment, it was twenty fourteen. Number one thing people wanted was a second grocery store, and it stayed that way, the, I think the, we're about to do a new comprehensive plan. But even the city electoral mentions the importance of improving food retail options. So, yeah, I just, on that front, I think it, I think it's a really worthwhile investment, and I think, like, the ARPA funds really. Present a unique opportunity to finally, hopefully, do something. About food retail that our community has wanted for a long time. And, you know, the question with that is the opportunity cost, like, where else could this one go? And that is why I am excited that we have like a little bit of time to work on our actual contract with them, and so make sure that our current businesses. So we get a short-term return on this data, as well as hopefully a long-term return on the, the store. So, yeah, I'm in favor of it. In terms of community engagement, that's, you know, kind of our wheelhouse in the Food Access Coalition. As Lacey said, at our County Foods Summit last month, we were able to do just about an hour workshop with the people who were there. And just get some feedback and some qualitative data around what the community thinks about this proposal. And, yeah, I would say overwhelmingly supportive, and, yeah, I mean, let me know if you want more questions about what people said. But, yeah, and also, I just think as well, in terms of the continued community involvement, like, how the Food Access Coalition operates is kind of. You know, that often the advocate for community voice, including, like, food retailers, I've done a lot of projects with them the past couple of years. And so, so, yeah, I think we, we can create a community-driven process with them. That's going to address all the concerns and, like, also hopefully be really helpful for our community.
Are there questions for Ms. Bockes or Ms. Green?
I'm curious about the data, the spending data that you've already started to. To gather, how granular can you get at that data? Like, can you tell? Who is shopping at the Summit County Safeway, for example, instead of ours, versus Walmart, versus Home Depot? How detailed can you get?
Yes, so, thank you, thanks for the question, yes, we invest very heavily in research tools. And, and look at a lot of different. To do that, we do that to look at the community in a lot of different ways and really understand demand. And like I said, put dollars to an actual domain. So, yes, talking about how granular, that report, let's see, that I showed you that had the leakage, that was just a quick snapshot. And go back to that, do y'all see the slide now, again, that says leakage, or retail leakage?
Yes, but we can't really read it from.
And, and, it, it, it is just a quick snapshot, but yes, so this spreadsheet. Can get very granular as into like how many apples and oranges and the number of shoes. That I purchased, and so the detail by category and by inventory levels is, is very specific. And yes, we, part of our process is to, again, like, I did this analysis of your Safeway. But we also look at every west, I mean, every grocery store in Frisco and in other communities and markets where we see people are shopping. And again, that helps us determine how much money that people that live in Leadville are spending in, in Frisco or in other cities to figure out. Why, you know, where they're spending their dollars. So the analysis that we do is, is, is very, very in-depth, we present it back to the city. Like I said, our process takes about a hundred days of doing this different research, doing the real estate analysis. And then we present our findings at a high level to the city leadership. But then, like I said, we, we encourage the reports that we've put together. To be shared with every, you know, local business owner, with every community leader that's interested, the Food Access Coalition, obviously. The county, you know, we realize that this is not in a silo, what we're doing. But this market analysis is very valuable information in, in this very specific, that is going to help every existing business owner. Help determine who's coming into their store, who's not coming into their store, and, and where money is being spent elsewhere. Um, who's coming into their store or who's not coming into their store, um, and, and where money is being spent elsewhere. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I, I do have one more. So I definitely see the short-term benefit. Uh, to current business owners knowing they need to sell more shoes or, or whatever, or if they did, that they would have a. Uh, clientele for that. I'm curious. I'm curious about the second part, not the presentation to us, but what happens after. Um, I think everybody in this room could come to a consensus in about ten minutes of what's needed and what we want. And that you could facilitate a community discussion about this, on what that is and. Get some pretty solid data on that. So my question is, how have you been successful in those other communities at actually making that happen? So once it's determined that we need to save a lot or whatever, uh, how do you actually facilitate that materializing in seven years?
So, so how do we, you take the next steps? And so that's why I said our team, um, what they're doing is once we. Generate the strategy, like I said, the specific prospects for Leadville, um. And, and like I said, that might be ten, it might be fifty, but it'll be, it'll be at least, you know, um, a certain number of prospects. And then like I said, what our team does, your specific team, uh, Brooke, John Mark, myself and Ashton. Is we call on email, go meet with those decision makers, right? So talking like you, I think you mentioned, you know, Save-A-Lot or, or Marriott Hotels. Whichever brands we've identified are wanted and needed. Attainable and are the right fit based on the real estate in the market in Leadville. That's what this team does is we, again, we don't just say, hey, we think you should open your store or your, your, um. Restaurant, uh, or your hotel in Leadville. It's that we've done the analysis. We know grocery store developer, that this is your target audience. That this is, um, the type of site that you desire, that, you know, all of these criteria are met. And most importantly, the city is proactive in wanting to. Um, you know, attract your specific store, restaurant or hotel to the community. So that's what this team is doing, like I said, all day, every day, calling, emailing, meeting with them in person. Going to these retail deal-making conferences to have discussions face-to-face. Because it is, it is a constant, um, uh, uh, we like to say pleasant persistence. Um, you know, I mentioned time, it is a big piece of that. These are long discussions, right? Um, uh, like that very last slide that I showed you was talking about, um, the, the timeline. Um, and you know, how many people are involved, uh, oops, sorry, how many people are involved with the process, um. There's a lot of variables and there's a lot of decision makers and there's a lot of people that are having to, um, say yes. To this, um, store opening or to their restaurant opening, right? They have to be profitable. They have to make money. What we're saying is if you open your restaurant or your grocery store or your hotel, insert the blank in Level. You will be profitable because we've already done the homework for you. Um, in, in all of those pieces. And so that's why some of those, um, success stories and case studies that I mentioned. Again, that's what we did on their behalf is we took that strategy and we said, here's your prospects. They came into agreement and said, yes, we want to see that brand of grocery store in our market, for example, Claremore, Oklahoma. They agreed that Aldi is one of the many grocery stores that they would like to see. And so this was a, you know, three-year process, I, I know, um, at minimum. Of, of having that, that dialogue with the developer that does Aldis in Oklahoma. With the real estate director, with the property owner who owned that property in Claremore. And all of those different players. So that's what we would be doing on the city's behalf is, like I said, it's that puzzle. And it's connecting the dots and that's what our team is doing all day, every day. And then, as I mentioned, you know, reporting it back to you, to the city leadership, to, to council, to mayor, you know, to our points of contact and saying. Here's what we heard, right? This is the feedback we're getting. This is what they're asking. And again, we will provide guidance and saying they're asking for X. We don't think you should do that. You know, or they're asking about, um, you know, uh. A future, um, you know, uh, population growth or. Tell me more about their, their tourism and, and, and you know, their, um, their sporting events that draw so many people. Everything that we're doing, we log and we recap. So you can see, this is what they're saying and this is where we are in the process of attracting, recruiting this business for Level.
I've got a couple of questions. Lacey, this is Rebecca. We met a couple of months ago when you were in Leadville, so thanks for. The time you put into this proposal. I think it's really interesting, um. And this might be a little bit of a follow-up to Tim's question. You mentioned that you've worked with roughly a thousand rural communities over the last fifteen years. Can you tell us what retail strategy's success rate is in those thousand communities?
And, and again, success rate is, is different for every community, you know, as I was mentioning, you know, um. Uh, Claremore, it was for, you know, um, grocery and for restaurants. Dell City, it is for, you know, grocery and restaurants. So again, success. It is, is a number we don't like to, to define specifically by the number of businesses that are opened. Because if that was the case, we would just go out. And talk to every business, every brand. That is not the right fit for Level or is not the right fit for that community. Just to say, we're, we're recruiting that business in, into your, your, your city, right? So it might be that one city that we work with pers- like I think this. This, one of these, they had a, a Kmart. Um, which one was it? Uh, Plainview, Texas. They had a Kmart that, that was vacant for thirty years. Right? And it has taken us, you know, several years, but that was their one ask for us was. Help us backfill that Kmart building that is a huge eyesore in our community. And so it's kind of a long way to say, you know, success is, is different for every community. Because that's why we don't tie it to specifically openings. Here's some businesses that are recruited and openings. Sometimes it's, 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 it's again, knowing what's practical and attainable. And so we can pivot and say, no. Unfortunately, we do not see that, that you are the right fit for X at the moment. However, as we keep, keep working this partnership, as new land is annexed or as new, um. Uh, schools are built up or whatever might be happening, as those things are changing. The target is always, always moving also. So I wish I could say it's, it's a very specific number. Um, but success is different to every city, which is why I tried to show you a few different, um, success stories. And, and a few different, um, businesses recruited. But a lot of the, the testimonials and the quotes and happily, happily like lucky to contact any references. What they really say is the, the partnership is successful because again, we are a trusted advisor and partner. Providing them with guidance and insight into all things commercial real estate. And helping them understand where not to spin your wheels, where not to focus too much effort. And, and how these things play into, uh, you know, the comprehensive plan, you know, process was mentioned. You know, part of our partnership is, is. Not just being, you know, a, a, a silo. It's saying, as the comp plan, as the master plan, as the. The county is looking at their development strategies. Let us be part of those discussions and again, let us help guide. All of those pieces and, and sometimes that is what they consider success. So sorry, a long answer, but it, it, uh, it is, it is a, a process. I want to make sure to clarify.
So we, I, I just want to interject here, um, you know, we do have kind of a full agenda and I do want to get council members' questions. Asked and answered, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to try to keep things a little short, please, so that we can, so that we can move on.
Um, would you have a? Yeah, yes. So to follow on that, if we define success as revenue generating. Have you been able to increase revenue for most of the communities that you've worked in, set aside? Individual storefronts or how many businesses open? Have you been able to increase revenue? Because I think that's one of our primary interests.
Yes, um, and yes, uh, on this slide, um, if you could see, um, our, um, average community that we partner with. Their sales tax collections have increased by a hundred, five thousand per year.
Okay, perfect. Great answer. And then the other thing I just wanted to ask, and this might be for, um, both Mara and you. And Lacey, when you were in Leadville, we talked about this a little bit. I know there's a lot of interest in increasing grocery access. And we have a couple of newer, smaller, maybe niche, niche grocery stores. So with retail strategies, look at those newer businesses. I would hate to do, and I would hate for us to do anything that would impact. The success of those newer small businesses.
Yes, yes. As I mentioned, you know, we want to amplify what the city's wants and needs are. So we're gonna do our analysis and again, provide, um, what we see. But part of that analysis is again, you telling us. These are, um, our, our businesses that, um, are successful. These are, um, uh, the types of, of restaurants that we do not want to see in our, in our city. And so we don't want to, um. Uh, I hate to use the word cannibalize because oftentimes retail just builds upon other retail. But yes, we're gonna present, again, present our findings to you and then you say, yes. That's the specific business or that's a specific project that we would like to see. Will you help us get it?
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, let's continue to mention the gravity. Other questions?
Yeah, thank you. Um, what would the shelf life be of the data from your research?
Um, we do a, an annual update, so every year, um, our team does a, a fresh, um, analysis every year. Um, we come to the city at least once a year to do an updated real estate assessment. Um, but as, again, this is a partnership, so if there are specific. Um, uh, numbers that's asked for or again, that we can provide data for different projects or different needs. That, that can be done, you know, instantly on, on a one-off at any time.
Thanks. And then so that kind of gives me the next question, which is. The fee we pay, how long does that go for? So is that like? In perpetuity, you will update us every year or?
Yeah, so, so we, we are consultants that do, um, uh, partnerships annually. Um, and you know, with different, um, uh, levels of contract. So typically, like I said, we do, uh, three-year partnerships. Going back to why these things take, take time, um, but at an annual rate. That, that can be, um, canceled at any time if there is some reason. Um, we don't have that happen often, um, but we do work as a consultant on an annual, um, engagement.
Thanks. Have you worked in communities where you couldn't find a match?
Well, we can always find matches. Um, again, every community has wants and needs and every community has real estate, right? It might not be, um, a, a, um, top site. It might be a, a vacancy that, that we might call it a third gen or, you know, a class C vacancy. But if there's a better option or a highest and best use, we can help identify. Um, there's always going to be opportunities for every city. But again, going back to why we'd never make a guarantee, because these are private businesses making their own decisions. Um, and we cannot, you know, force, um, or, you know, um, mandate any business to come into a, to a city or to a market.
Well, what cities have you worked in in Colorado?
Oh, um, I'm sorry. I don't have that list right in front of me. One second. Hold on one. Sorry, I don't, I don't want to take it through time while I'm looking that up if some, if you want to.
If you get back to us, that's okay. Thanks. And what are some of the populations of the smaller communities you've worked in?
Oh, um, we work with communities that are a few hundred people. So when I, when I say rural, um, is one of our, um, specialties, um. You know, a few hundred, um, and again, rural is very different across the country, right? Um, a western rural might look very different than something in the Midwest, something different in, in the south, um. But going back to, um, population is one specific number. You know, our market analysis, um, says, um, shows how, uh, consumers. Span, you know, past your principal boundaries, right? So a community that partners with this, like, uh, we have some that are three hundred people as residential population. But again, going back to that trade area and that cell phone data shows that they actually have two thousand consumers. Um, so, so just to kind of, you know, uh, put those two things. Population is one thing, but trade area is the other. But yes, we've worked with, um, uh, communities of all sizes and some within like, within the hundreds.
Thanks.
What is the total potential cost of? The program? And not having seen a proposed contract, what is the total overall cost? Of what I'm assuming is a minimum three-year commitment?
I'm sorry, you said was the total overall cost for the minimum three-year commitment? It's a little blurry there for a second.
Um, that's correct. That's the question.
Yes, yes. So, so we do three-year partnerships, like I said, with an annual opt-out if, if that, that needs to be done at any time. Um, and we are very straightforward, straightforward and transparent with our investment is forty-five thousand for the year.
And is there an additional commission on businesses that are attracted and open then? Is there a? Are there potential additional costs to that annual contract?
No, um, like I said, it's, it's a straightforward consulting fee, um, and partnership fee. And again, we don't want, and, and you don't want us to be incentivized for business. Again, because then that is not in your best interest, um, again, because then the quantity is not the same as the quality.
Great, thank you. And just to clarify for city administration, we're dedicating. Potentially ARPA funds for one year, but the next two years would be funded out of the general fund budget, not out of grant funds. Is that correct?
Uh, grant funds, that's not correct. Out of ARPA funds, there are potential grant funds.
Potential grant funds, but if those grant funds weren't available to us, then it would have to come out of.
If we didn't opt out to the first year, correct?
Thank you.
Christian, did you have a question?
No, it was answered.
Okay. Are there further questions for Ms. Bockis? Thank you very much for your presentation. Really good conversation. Appreciate everyone's questions.
Thank you all.
Okay, um, I'm wondering, city administrator, would you like to bump your report to the end of department reports? Because I'm so grateful our department heads have come in person. It's so wonderful to see you all. Would that, would it be okay to proceed with department reports?
Hmm, sure.
Uh, so let's start with street department. Thank you so much for your patience, Mr. Higginson.
I'm still away. Yeah, I think it was, uh, pretty basic. Uh, we just. Plod when we had to and cleaned up the roads and dusted away. We've been working on that steady. Uh, we worked on patrol cars and. Animal shelter cars, replacing tires and doing maintenance on everything, um. I kept us busy just doing that pretty much.
Thank you.
Really, there's nothing more to add. I mean, this is what we do, snow type.
Questions for Mr.?
Any questions?
Is anything different this winter in your process of planning than last winter as far as how you do the snow and tires?
Well, we're, we're trying different things and some are working and some are not, but, uh, we're figuring that out. I do have the original help this year, so that helps quite a bit. Right now, because of the storms or lack of, we've actually been able to stay right on top of the snowing in the streets, so we're. Pretty closely, yeah, almost every street, probably moved. I've been talking more and more with contractors on a one-on-one basis, so. Trying to keep them in line of what we're doing and working out deals with them to put their snow in our spots. With a little bit of help from them down the road.
Snow clearing after our one and only storm so far this year on Harrison, I knew was, was very, very late.
That was the one.
How, how can you address that next storm that doesn't wait four days or five days?
Um, we'll just bite the bullet and take the overtime and do it.
Is that something that you've communicated to your staff? I hope. Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Higginson? Okay, let's move on to police department. Thank you, sir.
I only have two I O Ns, uh, council members, mayor, uh, fellow staff members. Uh, the first one is the phone lines at the sheriff's office. The non-emergency lines keep going down. Uh, it's because uh, of the flex, Motorola Flex, records management system that was installed. Hardware is disrupting the system. Uh, they're trying to track down the reason and fix it. It's not impacting the nine-one-one lines, because the nine-one-one lines are hard, hard lines. Uh, the non-emergency lines are through the internet. Uh, and recently, he worked a very significant stalking case that had been going on for months. Uh, it resulted in an arrest warrant being issued for the suspect. He has now taken off. We think he's in Oklahoma. But it was a good, successful investigation, they can appreciate our efforts, and keep in her saying. That's all I have.
No question, what I kinda, what I intend to achieve, or what I, yours. To me, the increased patrol presence in the downtown area. Uh, I don't know if it's actually true, it's just a coincidence with my timing and perception, but. Uh, and, and the corridor from. The, the, the turnoff the poplar towards Safeway. I was passed on a double yellow from a family dog. By a reckless driver, and literally the next day, it was a speed trap, and that is application. But um, just seeing the, the presence in the alleys. And um, just in general, I saw Officer Ottega looking at an abandoned vehicle, so it just. Made me really happy, thank you.
We're keeping the toll company busy.
We can anticipate uh, that we'll probably exceed that line item. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to the fire department, um, I am actually going to bar. Chief Daly from giving the report tonight.
Hello?
Oh, yeah. What? Some sort of an emergency? What is happening? If any of you are wondering, what we are celebrating tonight is Chief. Dan Daly and his incredible twenty years of service in our community. I'm gonna try not to commit through this. Um, Chief Daly has served our community with honor and dedication. He has responded to the worst days in someone else's life, working to protect property and preserve life. He has, in fact, quite literally saved the lives of community members. Um, as chief, he has exhibited profound vision and leadership. Some of the impacts of this vision and leadership are the tangible outcomes such as Fire Station Two. The Training Center and Wildland Firefighting Deployment Program. His vision continues with what the Training Center can become, and how it can benefit the fire department and our community. And with ongoing planning for the future to preserve our staff. And uh, retain the excellent uh, firefighters that we have already. Chief Daly encourages professional development within the fire department, allowing our firefighters to grow beyond the confines of a simple job description. His dedication to continuous training and a focus on excellence has resulted. And our firefighters enjoying minor celebrity status when they are acting with other fire departments. And I would be remiss, finally, if I did not mention Chief Daly's mad, crazy skill. At finding equipment at deeply discounted prices. So I uh, would like to draw, have, ask everyone to. Join me in applause for Chief Daly, and I'm looking forward to the next twenty years.
You know, this has been one of uh, my true honors of my life. Um, and I really hope that uh, I am here, hopefully not for another twenty years, Mayor, but uh. For a long period of time to continue to serve this community. I have so many people to thank. Uh, this has not been about me at all, never has been. Mayor Lobby, you've been there with me um, through. The thick of it, um, throughout our times, and I can't thank you enough for your support during that timeframe of. Building an organization that, that we all can be proud of, and same with. The current mayor and all of the council personnel, city administrator, county manager, everybody at the county. And, you know, most of all, um. Guys, guys and girls that I love every single day that I come in, and uh. They support me and make me have a thrive. For this community and for the profession and this department that I actually truly love and adore. And uh, I, I will continue to do that. Um, for as long as I possibly can, and like I said, it's been a, a great honor of mine. To do this for so many years. Uh, I was firefighter in the Marine Corps, I worked in the front range, and uh. You know, that's one of the reasons why I'm here. I stay here because I love it, I love what we do. Um, you know, hopefully, these, these. My firefighters understand that, you know, I empower them, I respect them, and um, we build it together. And that's what it's all about, it's about the one team aspect of doing what we can to the best of our ability with the funding that we have. For the communities that we serve, so I, I can't thank you enough for this tonight. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
This is a, this is a board for you, Chief Daly. It says, the Louisville Fire Department. Thanks you, Chief Daly, for twenty years of courageous leadership and service, your commitment to safety and will be, will never be forgotten.
Thank you, Mayor. It's fire boy.
It's a fire boy.
But also family of us to be caring.
I just wish someone had a picture of your face when I said I was gonna bar you.
I would like to remind everyone in the room, we still are recording. Uh, just so you all are aware, both audio and video are being recorded.
So with this brief, uh, break from our, our regularly scheduled program, I'm. Suggest we all enjoy some cake and sit back down and get to work.
So Mayor, are we taking a break?
We're cutting cake and eating cake while we're having our meeting, no?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Andrew's gonna get us.
Okay.
Something to cut up.
Well.
So we can take a five-minute break while we actually.
Let's take a five-minute break while we cut the cake. It's not quite at our usual break, but we'll take it now. Thank you all so very much, thank you gentlemen. Thank you, Lori. Okay, okay, let's um, let's, let's just get back. Back online here, and I think to do that, let's, let's hop back to city administration's report.
Uh, well, the, the fire department did actually have a report, I forgot about that.
Just, if I may, just a couple of things, uh, real quick, because uh, it was historic today, we. We ended up burning fifty piles down by a community field. It's the first time as an agency that we've actually did prescribe burns um, as an agency, so. Um, that was wonderful for a mitigation project. You know, that we're obviously getting into a lot more here in all of Lake County, and um. We finally finished a project, part of a project from beginning to end. So, so that was one of it, it's a part of our C W P process and. And uh, you know, all of the um, partners that we're working with, it's just, we're starting to have a lot more. Progress on that, and in the years to come, I really hope that we, we do a lot more, so. Um, the rest of my uh, department report, I'm just gonna skip for the evening and just enjoy, but I wanted to make sure that you, you know your story. On that part.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing a bit of joy into our evening. City administration.
Uh, well, thank you, uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, the folks who just left. Uh, Lori Ty and her daughter Whitney for uh, helping orchestrate this surprise. Uh, now Dan Daly knows why I issued a stern message that everyone had to appear in person for this city council meeting. Uh, everyone was in on it but you. Uh, I wanna thank uh, Brianna Ortiz, who helped organize this, and Andrew Cummins, who pretended to go to the bathroom fifteen times. During the first part of this meeting, to make sure folks were still waiting outside to surprise the chief, so. Thank you, everybody, for all the work you put into making this uh, a surprise, and Chief, thank you. Uh, on behalf of the city staff for everything you do. Did, a, a, you know, the mayor said it so eloquently, but you are a pleasure to work with, so. Glad you've been here. Uh. Couple uh, updates. Good news on eight oh nine Spruce, we have two tenants currently, currently in um, the building. And we have several other potential tenants. We are getting uh, new carpet in several rooms and paint downstairs, and then. Uh, hopefully, some of those other folks who are interested as potential tenants can move in. Uh, we received an acknowledgement from the Department of Local Affairs that they received our grant application for the community center, so that is fantastic news. Uh, I don't know if we told you, our representative, Randy Snead, will be here this week. To get a tour of the community center, and we can help answer any questions that she may have about the grant uh, that we put in. So that's fantastic news. Uh, we, Randy had been up here previously and had seen the building from the outside before we purchased it. But now we get an opportunity to give her a tour and, and also walk her through the. Um, materials that the University Technical Assistance Program, U T A P students put together. Couple other quick updates, so the uh, permit process for twenty twenty-five, Lifetime has approached us. For some initial discussions, and the mayor and I have been, and, and Mr. Cummins has been in several meetings so far with Lifetime. Uh, we, we have requested that they not fly a helicopter over the city limits. As that was just a point that caused a lot of questions and concerns and comments, not only about. Safety, about noise, and Lifetime listened, and they will not be having a helicopter flying over city limits this year. They will have a helicopter, but it will, it will. For our human resources director positions, uh, position, I wanted to announce that Alicia Fetter has accepted our offer to join the city team. And uh, she will be beginning with the city on December thirtieth, so we're very excited about that. Um.
For which position?
For the human resources director position. Uh. Couple other things, uh, longer updates, the animal shelter. The letter that the city wrote to the county, uh, we have not received a substantive response from the county to that letter. Other than acknowledgement that it has been received. So the Board of County Commissioners met today and had it on their agenda, and the mayor and I attended and listened in. They uh, proposed seeking an amendment to the current. Uh, I G A to allow um, the deadline, the January first deadline to be extended. Uh, so that we can continue discussions at some point into the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. So essentially, the discussion started with the Board of County Commissioners saying, look, we have to do something by January first. And uh, the county attorney proposed that, well, you could. Actually amend the I G A to extend that deadline, and I indicated that serves the city's purpose of taking a breath. Continuing negotiations and. Working together uh, on a, a revised I G A. Due to some technical difficulties on my part, uh, that I, the I G A is in draft form, but. Uh, we need another day to get those um, edits over to the county. And so I think that's positive, I think the county still uh, wants to assume control. Of the animal shelter, uh, I think their vision of a new I G A is the county takes it over, and. Uh, so they have not addressed any of the questions we've, we've brought up about how that plays out. Um, there were several animal shelter employees who spoke up and indicated that, that is not something that they would want. So I, um, I hope that we will have further discussions with the county as things go forward, but what you'll, will expect is an amendment. So we can all have a little more time. Uh, one other thing I wanted to talk about, which also has garnered a lot of tension and some public comment here today. The work session that we have scheduled for January sixth. Uh, an update from the Board of County Commissioners today, the Board of County Commissioners issued a statement of support. And I'm happy to get a copy of that and provide that to you all, but that was their decision on their action. Uh, they did not uh, pursue a designation as a sanctuary city, but rather a letter of support. We've, staff has been working internally on the plan and structure for our meeting on January sixth, including. You know, what the, what the purpose and the goal would be for a successful meeting, and what that would look like. Uh, I think that our main purpose is to have a thoughtful and inclusive and informative discussion. On the subject, and I am going to make a request to the city council that we allow staff more time to uh, plan for that. Because. Personally, I think I've had a lot of uh, fires, uh, literally to put out on other topics, and have not had the ability to. Put as much time into planning for this meeting as is needed. Next week is Christmas, and that following week is New Year's, and then we have the meeting the following Monday. It's just not enough time for me to talk to enough people in the community to get input on. How we can make this be a successful, productive meeting. Uh, I think there are some. Uh, good ideas in our community about how people need to be heard, and how we can make that productive, not destructive in our community. So I would like to time, request that we move that date to have the time to do this right. So with that, I think what we, oh, last update. I always like to announce a big fun holiday party, six P M, uh, and on the eighteenth at Silver Dollar.
Be there, or be square.
That's tomorrow.
It is tomorrow.
Tomorrow already.
Yeah.
The third Monday of the week.
Yep.
So I think uh, the only thing I would need from uh, the council, whether it's at this point or a later point, is some. Potential dates where uh, council would be available for that work session, and then we will. Uh, I think we're gonna be looking to have that event at Freight. And so if we get some potential dates, then we can work with Freight to determine their availability. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
The next open Tuesday would be two weeks following, is that correct?
Uh, so, well.
For the fourteen.
So we were actually talking about doing it on Monday.
It's gonna be on a Monday.
To uh, because of those community meetings.
Well, the community meetings are now on Monday.
I would honestly prefer to have it on a Tuesday night, say some city council, and not make it a Monday night meeting.
Yeah, so we could, uh, so we have our first, if we're looking in January, obviously, our first meeting is on the seventh. And we had, um. Did we? Did we talk about the fourteenth? So the only thing we would have to do is, the request on that was also to have that meeting at seven P M. Just to accommodate people who have work schedules, so it would be a little bit different, and then that would be good, because it wouldn't conflict then. Or potentially overlap, H P C, it looks like on my calendar, has a meeting, and then that would give some reason.
Yeah. Yeah, seems fun to me.
So are we okay with that?
Yeah, yes.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
I do have one question for the administrator, based on events permitting for twenty twenty-five. We had during the Holiday Alights. Uh, another event that made heavy use of confetti. And it, it was obvious that it ended up making a rather large mess, and this time with. Non. Cloud-gradable confetti. Is there a way to do one of two things, either ban confetti in future events totally? Or at least if, ask the question specifically, and if confetti is gonna be used in any way, shape, or form by anybody in the parade. That there'd be an additional. Rather expensive permit fee, so that. rather expensive permit fee so that the city could afford to make clean up efforts as necessary?
Yeah, and I know that there's a reason we can't do both. I think, I think we've talked about revising the form to essentially, I think, and I would have to look into biodegradable more, but the issue with that is, is biodegradable, uh, essentially means, I think, over a longer period of time than dissolvable. And I'm not even sure what dissolvable means as far as our climate and our community. So I think our preference would be to you know, ban that and anything that essentially could leave that kind of, uh, stuff for the city to clean up and also saying, look, if you do, you need to clean it up.
Is that something that we could actually stake in the permit?
Yes.
Because these are parades and because we have different participants, it could be something that even if you're not aware it might happen, if it happens, this is how much you'll be charged. Had a fee, is that something that could be done?
Well, I think what we'll say is unless you clean it up, we're gonna clean it up and charge you.
And even when the event coordinators say they're going to clean it up, it's still a huge burden for merchants on the street. Uh, and ongoing and especially with things like confetti because it blows in literally for weeks. So would be nice to see that directly addressed. You know, candy, there's a reason to pick it up off the ground if it gets leftover, but confetti is a completely different thing. It, it is literally garbage after the event.
Do you wanna talk about the, that revision?
Yes, um, I am currently working on those revisions. Um, it has been discussed with a lot of our, um, I don't know if vendor is exactly the right word, but, um, such as Main Street, uh, the people who do put on a lot of our parades. Yeah, our event coordinators, that's a good word. Um. Yes, I, I have been in discussion with them as well as, uh, some of these organizations who, uh, participate in parades, um, like the floats themselves. And we have been discussing and yeah, I think that that is a, a great idea and I personally am working on that. Um. That is one of the things I was typing up actually today. So, um, it is in the works for
Great.
all future parades that happen within city limits.
Thank you guys for addressing that.
But it's broader than confetti, right? It's any trash.
It, it, it would be, it would be any type of trash and I would call out confetti specifically because it's gotten so inexpensive to have these cannons that they can do that are quite flashy. It just generates a tremendous amount of trash. It's a burden on the whole city.
Gotcha.
Uh, and there's really no reason for it. The bad thing for our environment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, um, council over here.
I had a question about the P B swims, city sales tax and how that is gonna look for rollout. And how businesses are supposed to remit that? Is that gonna be remitted to the state, the city, or what, what does that whole thing look like?
So, um, Tim, this is Russell Hewlett, Finance Director. Um. So I actually have that in my, uh, department report. Um, so I am currently working on postcards that will be sent out. I have sent out communication to the paper to put that in the paper in the next few weeks. Um, and then I believe that, um, Ms. Bushman will also have a blurb in the business license renewal forms that are going out. So we're trying to hit, um, businesses in all aspect. Um, I also have a draft email. I just need Ms. Bushman to verify, um, the email addresses that I have. That it looks like everybody that I pulled is active. Um, so hopefully that will go out tomorrow bearing the fact that she is feeling better. Um, so as it stands now, the, uh, merchants will collect the four point five percent um, and remit their payments directly to the state as they have been. Um, they will not need to create a new account for this. Everything will go to the state and then the state will send the half percent sales tax directly to the city rather than the county, um. And then the county reimbursing us. So the first payment that, uh, should be due for January sales tax would be in February. We will not see the first payment come into the city until around the tenth of March, uh, for January sales. Um, but the only thing that will change for businesses right now is the sales tax percentage, uh, the, the revenue or the avenue that you take to submit those is unchanged.
Cisco.
And will that sales tax apply to lodging within city limits as well?
For the lodging or for things they sell at a lodging establishment?
Um, for the lodging, so some county, sometimes there is sales tax on the lodging booking. And I don't know which sales tax it is, so I'm wondering if this sales tax applies to lodging as well.
Okay, we'll, we'll probably have to check on that.
Okay. And then if, if so, everyone you find out of course. Um. Consider that you might also need to communicate to if it's like S T R license holders or something. Thanks.
Other questions for City Administrator?
You talked a little bit about permitting process, twenty twenty five permitting process for the, um, race series and whether or not there's gonna be a helicopter. And as I recall, they said there wouldn't be a helicopter last year, so I hope they really mean it for twenty twenty five.
And we also, well, just so you know, there will be a helicopter.
But not in city.
Correct. Yes.
They're not gonna cross McQuethy essentially.
Okay.
I hope that's true.
And they will be, um, they're planning to film the finish of the mountain bike race with a drone.
Oh, so there will be a drone.
Yeah.
Just like, just like the Jersey. Are we also making changes to the permit to make, um, make the city more whole, I guess, in terms of the amount of police work that's done and the amount of streets department work that's done to support the race series?
Yes, so that's also part of the revised, uh, T U P process. So as I mentioned, the planning department's looking at some software. And that will not, we will not be able to roll that out in time for, uh, the permitting process for at least thirty series. I think there usually got, uh, permits to us February-ish. So we are revising the permit to be more clear about the information that we need and not that we need a twenty minute presentation on you know, the new outward bound aid station. What we need is the information that's relevant to the city's permit. So such as when you need streets that have breakdown time, things like that. And so we've been working with our own feedback and then some feedback from the race series about what would be more helpful for them. And so I think what we'll end up having is a revised form for now until we have a software program put in place. But yes, the issue on the, the cost, I had, as I mentioned, meetings with other uh, similar communities with similar types of races and, you know, we are underselling ourselves substantially. You know, we are essentially paying our staff to, to do a, a private event.
Right.
And so we, we plan to put in, we've always had lines in our T U P for what that would cost. And I think we're just gonna be clear that we intend to recoup that cost and it, you know, there's options for doing it. I think we need to spend a little more time internally talking about it, whether it's a rate per hour. Uh, you know, that may make more sense for, for police. As I told you, some other communities where streets don't do it by hour, they do it by street. So there's just, just different options and we'd have to look at, but we are leaving, oh. We are going out of pocket quite a bit and I think that it's important for us to make sure that we don't do that in the future, given our, our revenues.
Good.
So the intention is the permit to cover the cost of the streets department and the police department and the administration time. Uh, all of those things.
Y- yes, and how we do that is the permit fee is intended to cover city hall time. Then that, we've estimated that, we talked about that last year, the fee, you know, it's, it's fifteen hundred dollars and that's city hall time. Whether it's your time in the meetings, whether it's our time putting the application materials together, working with the applicant. That, and then it's the same for events of any sock, that number. We wait for nonprofits, but if anybody else came to us and said, we, we're gonna do this, they would have the same fee. And then we would charge that event, whether it's per hour or street. And that would fluctuate depending on how much time we invested for, for streets and, for streets and P D.
So two different fees. You have your permit fee, your
Correct.
And then just a line item fee for streets and police?
Correct. So a lot of times we did this with a film permit. Uh, we said, okay, here's how many hours we spent. You know, you said, you estimated five hours. We actually spent three. So that's what we, we calculate and we send them along.
It'll be interesting to see that issue. Thank you.
Any questions for the, the city administrator?
Okay, let's move on to animal shelter. She hasn't made the podium or?
Yes, yeah, please. It's a little easier to hear.
Um, so we're still out to at two hundred and fifty eight animals so far this year. We do have number two fifty nine coming in tomorrow. So anybody interested in a eagle, come by. Um, as you see our intakes here, I do have a star next to the city surrenders. Though I do like to point out that we have, um, some outliers that are gonna change the statistics. We had one situation which was, I think, thirteen cats and kittens from one, um, R V in the city that was surrendered to us. So of course that spikes the city numbers. And then we do have a landlord who is trapping, uh, a feral cat colony that's living within the city limits and bringing them into us. So those are increasing the city surrender number. Um, since I created this for the November thirtieth, the November reflection, we've also had four additional surrenders for the county and then the one coming in tomorrow is for the county. For the data so far this year, we've actually seen some higher trends for strays, surrenders, unclaimed strays is higher. Transfers out is, um, record breaking high. So that's great because that means we're having more partnerships. Um, we know nationwide adoptions are pretty slow with economics being what they are and everybody catching up on their COVID animals. Um, so being able to transfer out an animal that might not be adoptable here, but would be adoptable somewhere else. So it's not continuing to sit here for months. And lower adoptions, again, unfortunately, that is kind of what we're seeing as a national trend right now. Our fundraisers for the fence and the painting portrait, um, little grid in the lobby is slow right now. People have stated they're happy to contribute. There is not sure, you know, since the county city takeover issued the animal shelter, they weren't really willing to donate nine hundred dollars for a camel if the shelter staff weren't gonna be able to use it. So. Um, and the next page just shows our, our outcomes and who brought in the most animals. So private citizens are still winning now.
Other?
And we got our lovely holiday card. So this family adopted from us. Um, we, uh, who is now Lucy, so we get these every holiday. It was just in our box. I'm gonna do shut up.
Other questions for the animal shelter manager? Glad to see so many return homes. All right, let's move on to the deputy city clerk who is who is in line. Um.
Under the weather.
Under the weather.
Yeah. The weather has been hitting city hall. So, uh, we.
Yeah.
We, uh, Mr. Cummins will make the update for us.
Thank you. Um, yes, so, uh, Ms. Bushman has asked me to, um, to say a few things. Uh, the first thing is she would love for you all to read her report. And if there is any, um, direct questions about it, um, she would be happy to answer those at a later time herself. Um, the one thing she did want to touch on was the S T R uh, compliance letters that were sent out recently. Uh, we already have received a few, um, responses to those letters from the people who were, who, who those were mailed to uh, in a very, um, positive way. Uh, Ms. Bushman has already spoken directly to each of the people who have responded so far, um, as of last Friday. And, um, she is very, uh, hopeful that there is a, a path forward in, um, rectifying a lot of that. So she's very hopeful and, um, believes those letters are doing some good work.
And I think, uh, there were ten uh, of those letters that went out to businesses that we felt were operating a short term rental without a license and of those, uh, Ms. Bushman is, Mr. Cummins indicated had written to her and said, we're so sorry, we didn't realize we had to pay this. We'll get on it right away. So, uh, the response has, has been falsified.
So they were able to get a license?
It, uh, it could have been that they had not, uh, completed the application materials. I'll, I'll verify on that. So so sometimes what happens is, uh, we get someone who starts an application and they do have the paperwork and then they stop. So sometimes we're like, what, what is happening? They'll, we will hold the spot for them and then if they actually complete everything, then they have a license. So.
Good.
And, um, at one point in a prior meeting, we asked if if there was an operating S T R without a license, was there a mechanism to chart, to ensure that they pay the accommodations tax on the rentals they've they've had?
Right. So that's the data we've gotten from Deckard, which we just need to cross, cross-reference to many of those. They, they Deckard just can, can see anyone who has, has anything populated on the internet. And so, yes, we would be able to write to those folks as well and say, here's, here's what you owe us.
In terms of the tax that we have or have not collected, like Deck, Deckard does not have that information moving forward, but like in the past, that's why we have to cross correlate.
I, I guess to be more pointy and, um, if someone had been operating in S C R without a license for the past few years, um, would we be collecting a tax from that person or no?
Yeah, I, my, my understanding, that's what Dagger can tell us.
Great. And but legally, we do still collect, even if they didn't have a licensed S T R, we do still collect the tax from them, right?
Yeah, I think we would definitely try and collect the tax. Yes.
Cause operating the S T R is illegal, but then also not remitting the taxes also.
Assume there's even one point is if they've been operating illegally and there is no permit available or there is no license available. We have enforcement available to make sure that that doesn't continue?
Yeah. Y- yeah, absolutely. So what, what we would, uh, I think the last time we came, when, uh, Ms. Day was here, we wrote to the, the potential owners who are operating without a license and then the ones who didn't respond, we sent a next letter with the consequences, which is, you know, you're subject to the, the penalties in our code, which you know, can be substantial per day. And we ended up just getting compliance, uh, either we're not operating it or we're gonna do, uh, not short term. And, uh, it ended up being, I, I think the last one was being operated as a, uh, full-time, but it was flagged because it was just during the summer months. And so the property owner said, look, I'm just doing this during the summer months. We asked for evidence and they said, here it is. And we said, okay, great. Thank you.
Final questions for, um, the absence, Ms. Bushman? Okay, let's move on to community development and planning. Ms. Bushman. I'm sorry you're not here in person, but I'm also pleased you're not sharing your weather with us.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and Council from just upstairs. Um, uh, if you want to follow along, excuse me, with me. I'm on those on page fifty-five of your packet. I have, uh, four main updates tonight regarding um, construction with the rail yards, uh, some long range planning activities, um, a development review item and some department training. Uh, so just jumping right into, uh, construction update in the rail yards. On phase one, um, I do have some good news to report uh, regarding the stormwater management enforcement that's been ongoing since, um, April of last year. Uh, yesterday, we did receive a letter from our consulting civil engineering firm, R G Associates, um, stating that they, um, they have received all the engineering documentation that they've been waiting for, uh, regarding the flooding at the rail yards and that um, that, that, the, in their, uh, High Country Developers Engineer has addressed our engineers, uh, concerns. So So we have, as of yesterday afternoon, um we uh we did resume issuing building permits and certificates of occupancy to non-high country developer builders. Uh, should uh we are still holding some escrow funds for um some rock and a swale along the east side um that will need to be installed next spring. Uh, and we are um we uh we do remain in enforcement mode for um the Mountain View Drive Extension um Acceptance Punch List. And also we remain enforcement mode for um the trees and the irrigation needs to be installed uh next summer that they're currently in violation of. So uh some good good news um regarding enforcement, we do remain in enforcement for other items. Uh, moving on to long range uh updates, um just submitted our our department's strategic planning objectives to the consultant. Our department's really excited about that because I think a lot of the work um that falls within the the four priorities that City Council has established uh really falls within the the realm of community development and planning. Um, and so I think there's gonna be a lot of important work to do there over the next year or two. Um, so I'm really excited about that. Regarding the the One Community Project and the the Comprehensive Plan, um we remain uh we're we're meeting regularly the project management team and the engagement team uh meeting regularly to prepare for and begin engagement on uh community values. And we are preparing for um a community launch event in early February. And uh that requires some planning, so that's kind of what we're doing right now regarding the the One Community Project. The website is live. And um I encourage you to uh to check that out, onecommunityproject.org. Regards to Development Review, our Historic Preservation Commission has held a couple of work sessions regarding um interpretation of the Secretary of Interior Design Standards for garages. We're starting to see a lot of proposed garage additions on properties within the historic district. And um we're just trying to dial in how we interpret that and then make recommendations to City Council. And then lastly, uh uh on Thursday, our department will be doing an annual uh training slash retreat day with the Solita Community Development Department. We'll be going to Solita, meeting with their Community Development and Planning Department, um talking about some of their projects and processes over the past um uh over the past year and seeing what we can learn from them. And uh the rest of my report is in your packet and I can take any questions. Thank you.
Are there questions for Miss Bushman? Thank you very much for all that great news.
Thank you for a very thorough report, makes it easy.
I'm just gonna make one super quick comment. It's not a question shaping, but uh I know from personal experience that we reached out to Alex because we have to get a new garage door and he approved it within one day. And I'm just looking at the spreadsheet that you provided and the timeliness of response for the people wanting to do work on their properties, I think is very, very good. So I appreciate that um that quickness.
Thank you for the back.
Okay, let's move on to financial sales tax comparison.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Green, once again. Um, so financial highlights. Um, we did hire a new employee for the account position. She started yesterday. Um, the applicant and hire is Stephanie McQuaid. Um, many of you may know her from the community. Um, she has, I think, nine years of government um background work, um budgeting um in her former role, um she did some payroll, so she's a, she's gonna be a great asset to the team. Um, bring positive energy and I'm I'm very excited to have her on board. Other updates, uh we are at approximately ninety-two percent of the budget year. Um, most depart- departments are running under budget or right in line with budget. Um, with the exception of the city hall expenditures, which I believe we discussed last time, some of those origins um that are causing that are the uh the flood at the Tabor Hand uh worked at the mostly the insurance claims. Um, and then the two hundred thousand dollars that we um go to full circle um are impacting that. Fire department is also running in line for the year with the exception of the unbudgeted items that we see for wildland fire um in the training budget, but we are beginning um we're we're catching up on those wildland payments coming in, so we should see that even out in the coming months for the twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Um, sales tax. I'm still projecting that we will end up around three point seven uh between there and three point seven five million. Um, we're still tracking over twenty twenty-three at about a four percent increase from the previous year, even though it looks like we are we are down, very down compared to budget. Um but I I would think overall we're doing probably well with that. Um, as I mentioned, the new sales tax the half cent or half percent sales tax goes into effect January first. We will be sending out communications in various forms um to the businesses. Um, I will be creating a new fund within the finance system to track that separately. Um, and I have already set up a um a division in Colorado Trust for those funds to sit and generate um some investment income on that. Um and as I mentioned, we'll, we can expect our first um receipt of those around March tenth of twenty-five. Let me see if I have any other, that's that's it. Those are the highlights, um unless you have any other questions for me and items.
Questions for finance?
Couple, thanks, Crystal. And congrats on getting the another teammate in the finance department there. Um the budget line one sixty zero six three one two deals and memberships.
Um, are you're looking at the financial statements?
Yeah, so in our packet, it's page seventy-two.
It's under the police department. Each department has their own.
Oh, sixteen, sorry.
Just curious, that's pretty far over budget. Just curious what that's from.
Which department is that?
Uh, police department.
Police department?
Yeah. And dash sixty dash zero dash six three one two.
Uh, I can tell you that uh a number of trainings were authorized uh for the our admin staff for a couple reasons. Uh, one, to uh learn how to properly handle evidence. So as you know, we don't have an evidence custodian and uh um our administrative staff volunteered to do training, so they could properly handle that. Uh, there were a number of other trainings. They did attend some Open Records Act trainings. And uh I'm trying to recall, there were several other trainings, and I think it's one of the things that we would we need to think through is when we have uh folks who are covering other duties and are willing to learn, we need to be able to offer them training. And so generally, when the staff request a training on an area they were unfamiliar with, I authorize that training. Those are the ones that come to my uh come to me right now that I'm remembering that we didn't budget for.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to get, cause that was very slow to get to the detail. Um, but yes, as as Ms. Simonson said, um a lot of those trainings that were were not budgeted for evidence, um and then I think possibly some uh training for the uh Motorola Flex system is is in there as well.
And this was very recent, uh in this period, most of the expenses, um so.
And and in that case, that it is more likely than not the Motorola Flex training, so that has taken up a substantial amount of administrative staff time in it.
So in October, there was thirty-one hundred dollars that was spent to Highland Ranch Law Enforcement Training. So that would um let's see, and that's post refresher.
That's for me. And just to clarify, we're we're now contracting with the county for evidence collection and management, correct?
We've always had that option. I think we're utilizing that option now. So we've had that option since we signed the intergovernmental agreement that we could use them to assist, and so I think.
You've chosen to move forward with that, but yes, thank you.
Um, couple other questions. When when we do um pay the sheriff for coverage, what budget line is that? Or do we, how can we see how much we've paid to the?
I don't think they'll this.
I think they have not done this much.
Okay.
Um.
Where will that show up when they do find?
Well, and that's a good question because there, this is a new situation, so the 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 question would be uh whether my Ms. Ula feels like it's best to create a new line item for that. Um, and I mean.
So they have they have billed us and we have paid twenty-five hundred dollars this year. Those were in the invoices were in March. Um and let me see.
So we'll potentially have a nine month bill come first of the year. It would be nice to see that as a separate line item only to be able to track it. Yeah, or at least send an update a little bit earlier. Uh, and be able to track it long term as an individual thing.
And I think that twenty-five hundred dollars was.
Because the I G A didn't even begin until gosh, yeah, well after March.
So those are going in um account zero one sixty zero five zero zero four um contract services. It's already a separate one.
Can we rename that so that it's something that's more visible?
We can name it anything.
Can you say the number again, sorry?
Zero, five, zero, zero, four.
Yeah, so it's gonna be up with the salaries as for that is located.
Other questions for finance?
Yeah, just one more. Um, am I correct in interpreting that year-to-date actual, we are almost three hundred thousand dollars in the red?
Well, so.
New over expenditures?
Wait, revenue over expenditures? No, it so are you looking at the bottom line for uh all expenditures? Where where are you, just tell me where you're looking at that.
It's in our packet on page seventy-four. And the line is at the bottom, net revenue over expenditures. And then uh negative two hundred ninety thousand nineteen dollars and seventy-three cents.
Yes.
And is that um are we anticipating finishing that way or will that correct somehow that isn't represented yet?
Um, well, we will be over budget because of the contribution to full circle. Um, and then we we didn't budget for, you know, the the flood at the Tabor Home and the claims that.
So some of the insurance claims are coming.
Yeah, because the revenue is gonna post to the revenue side, not the expense side, so we'll be.
Word, and the full circle contribution was two hundred thousand dollars. What were the total costs that are potentially reimbursed for the Tabor Home repairs?
Well, I think we estimated Tabor Home, pardon me?
At this point, we know.
Tabor Home was uh forty thousand dollars. And then Spruce Street were, I think it's well above that. And then here, I don't know that they've completed the work yet, so I would expect uh Spruce Street is probably closer to fifty thousand dollars or more. And
So we're looking at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars overall between the three properties?
I think I'll check on our on our plans, yeah, and so uh.
Well, I'm not sure that we've received all of those. Yeah, I I believe they posed to, we don't have a separate line item for um those claims, and maybe that's something we should think about. Um, I believe they're going into um the reimbursements line item and the on the revenue side. Um, the zero one three hundred thirty-five twenty, I believe that's where they're going.
And what is that line right now?
Uh, year-to-date, we're at seventy-five thousand, a little more than seventy-five thousand, so.
Since we have so many more properties than we've had in the past, that would be nice to see as a separate one. Potentially.
Yeah.
We have to assume unexpected expenses for repairs.
Yeah.
And we're managing a lot more properties than we were two years ago.
Thanks for fielding all those questions.
Final questions for finance? Okay.
Uh, sales tax.
Can we talk about? Okay. Final words on sales tax?
I have a question about the accommodations tax comparison. The graph is just very strange. Um, no tax collected in September. I assume that's why October is so high.
They pay quarterly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, um and then we get some stragglers that pay in between, but they are due quarterly.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Uh, what what part is it? So they pay whatever they want, basically.
Yes, if they do not pay um by the the scheduled due date for the quarter, they are imposed penalties and penalties.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions on accommodations tax, sales tax? Okay, now let's face it. Other questions on the bills?
It's not as big as I'm used.
Right, that's so true. It's a little more relaxed reading through them. Okay. If there are no questions, uh I would entertain more.
One more seconds.
Oh, in favor? Okay, you're so great. I know you're anxious. Thank you very much. Thank you, department heads, um again for being here and for giving us your excellent reports. Um, should do cake. Okay, let's move on to our action items.
Sorry, uh, on that last item, I did not hear um Councilmember Hill's vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Okay, I'd like to move on to our action items, the first of which is a flat amendment for Northville addition. Lot sixty lots three, A five, six, and seven at six twenty-three East Eleventh. Um, this is a public hearing. And so, let's proceed. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Dana Green. I'm the mayor of Leadville. This is a public hearing before the Leadville City Council has considered a flat amendment application by Jason and Shannon Trust requesting a proposed flat amendment for the property located at lots three, A, five, six, and seven block sixty, North Leadville Edition at six twenty-three East Eleventh Street. Uh, when this public hearing is opened, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I'll then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report, followed by the applicant to make a brief presentation of his or her proposal, followed by public comments from members of the public in attendance. The applicant will have an opportunity for rebuttal, which is the applicant's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Once the public comment portion of the hearing is closed, we'll not accept additional public comments unless it is response to questions posed by the council with the applicant and city staff. Staff will have an opportunity for clarification and rebuttal, which is staff's opportunity to respond to any comments made by the applicant or members of the public. Council members will then have an opportunity to ask questions of staff and the applicant. And at the conclusion of our questioning, the council will deliberate and render a decision, which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi-adjudicial, which means that we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself and state your physical address. If you would like to submit written materials, please understand that the city will have to hold on to these materials for at least thirty days after city council renders its decision. Any questions about the public hearing procedure? None. I will now open the public hearing for a proposed flat amendment for the property located at lots three, A, five, six, and seven block sixty, North Leadville Edition, six twenty-three East Eleventh Street, applicants Jason and Shannon Trust. At this time, I ask the city council members to disclose any expertise, communication, or conflict of interest with the applicants.
Um similar, uh I guess. This is Councilmember uh Lumen Lab. Um I did, of course, do work at the regional housing authority level um towards this project uh in its initial phase. Um they've been housing at uh ten two hundred. And I don't believe that will influence my vote on this in any specific way, and we are longer in oversight of this project.
Is there anyone from council who objects to that or feels that Councilmember Lumen Lab should refuse? Thank you. Let's move on. Will staff please uh report the highlights?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. For the record, I'm Chapeau Lechance, the Director of Community Development and Planning for the City of Leadville. Uh so this I'm expecting tonight will be um pretty straightforward. This is um probably one of the smallest uh pl- plat amendment projects that we'll. That we'll see, but technically still requires a public hearing. Uh so this will be a similar subdivision application to the housing in ten thousand two hundred um project was which was also a plat amendment, which is the last plat amendment that this council saw. Um but this project is located on the east side. Um most of the property is vacant. It does contain a uh existing single family home on one of the lots. I'll just pull up some pictures here on the screen as I kind of talk a little bit about this project. Um so the proposal is to. Uh take four existing lots, modify the property lines to create two wider lots. Uh and again, one of those is containing an existing uh three family uh three unit dwelling. Um there are uh as mentioned, four existing lots on the property. Um the easternmost um lot containing uh the house, just describe a little bit of history here. Um in nineteen sixty two, um this property was platted on the uh North Leadville Edition plat. Uh with uh twenty five foot wide lots. And then in two thousand eighteen, um the city council approved a plat amendment. That um modified a portion of the property, the easternmost lot three A. And then so what is proposed tonight, and I'll put this their proposal back on the screen. Um is uh creation of two lots from four lots, uh making making two wider lots. So I'll just talk a little bit about the uh code uh requirements here. Um one of the requirements and that I've described in your in your staff report is that the. Subdivision uh complies with the zoning code. Uh this lot three A, which I'm I'm kind of putting my hand on here on the screen, is the lot that contains the existing uh three unit dwelling. Uh and the so the uh enlargement of that property um to lot five A will actually bring the lot into conformity. Uh with our zoning code density requirements um and would allow three units of of uh residential density on the property. Um so staff finds that that's a good thing is bringing that um that property into compliance. I'll move on to um just discussion of the comprehensive plan. Uh this. Part of town is designated as Townsite Residential on the future land use map, and the description of that. In the comprehensive plan, um describes that there are infill opportunities and that infill redevelopment. Will require aggregation of smaller lots. Uh so in summary, staff does find that this is complying with the comprehensive plan, which is uh an important component of this evaluation. Um those are the main points. The rest of this evaluation is in your staff report in your packet. And uh Planning Zone Commission did hold a public hearing on this last Wednesday evening. And they did recommend uh approval with the findings and conditions that are included in your packet. And on the screen, I've got uh page one O two from your packet, which has the proposed motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lechance. Are there particular questions for staff before we move on to the applicant statement?
Uh I'm confused about who the applicant is. Um how does housing at ten two interact with? Uh individuals named as the applicants?
It does not. I think that there's some confusion. Um I I think one of our council members um uh mentioned that they're involved with the housing in ten thousand two hundred project. Which also required a plat amendment subdivision application, and that was the last uh like similar type of subdivision application to this that this that this council reviewed. Um but this the applicants uh as stated in your staff report are Jason and Shannon Trust, and they are um. They are the property owners. So this this project doesn't have anything to do with housing at ten thousand two hundred.
That's what confused me as well because it's titled two thousand two hundred in our packet, so I.
Maybe just.
Cover your faces.
Yeah, I don't know what to play say, but it made no sense to me, which is why I sound very confused.
Thank you for your attention, the detail. Um. I'd like to move on. Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry about that. Yeah, that's a that's a typo remaining from the template. I apologize.
Okay, I I just wanted to play it so in case they did some crazy stuff.
Um okay, I I believe I saw the applicants online earlier this evening. Are they? Oops, where'd Andrew go? I can't see the uh. The grid.
Yeah, we're here.
Oh, great. Um would uh welcome. Would you like to uh give a brief presentation of your um your proposed plat? Amendment?
Sure. Um so these four lots that we have. I'm sorry, this is Shannon Trust, um six twenty three East Eleventh. And um the plat amendment that we're applying for turns the four lots into two. So like uh Chapin said, this brings us into compliance with the density laws. So we'll have with our house the thirty three feet. And then um an extra lot that we eventually um will probably uh sell. But the amendment to our current uh residence will just turn into a um a fenced in yard. So if that's additional information that's useful. Then great.
Thank you. Are there questions for the applicant on this application? Okay, I would like to now open the public comment portion of this public hearing. Are there any members of the public in attendance who would like to comment on this application? See none. Is there anyone online who would like to comment on this application? And again, I'm gonna ask you to. See none. I um would someone please make a motion to close the public comment portion of this public hearing?
Best moves to close the public comment portion of the.
About a second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Thank you. All right. As there was no public comment, there is gonna be a rebuttal. Um let's uh. Let's move on. Any last minute questions of staff? Any comments? Or discussion? They see none. It seems pretty straightforward. Uh I would entertain a motion then. Um this moves to approve the North Leadville Edition Block sixty lots three, eight, five, six, and seven plot plat amendment. P L dash twenty twenty four dash zero eight one, located at six twenty three East Eleventh Street, along with the attached ones and conditions.
Edward's.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Tharp?
Yes.
Councilmember Runa the Act?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Uh my Mayor Green?
Yes.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Yes. Great.
Thank you.
Hey. Thank you very much. Congratulations and thanks for your patience with us this evening.
You do as well.
Let's move on. Item, which is the second reading for ordinance nine, series of twenty twenty four. This uh because it is our second reading and we do not have a public hearing, the first time around, this will be our public hearing, so um let's uh. Let's move forward. So this uh item is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Leadville. Adding a new chapter of five point five two, the title five of the Leadville Municipal Code regarding tobacco product retailer licensing. Um because this is the second and final reading of the ordinance, city council will follow these steps. First, I will ask that city staff give any presentation or provide any information that they have to city council about the ordinance. Um I also see uh customacies in the audience um representing uh public health. Um and so if you would like. When we get to that point to to say something as well, uh I would I would appreciate that. We will city council will then have the chance to ask questions of staff and have uh discussions with staff during the staff presentation. And next. I will invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinance that they would like city council to consider. Any member of the public who wishes to speak on this ordinance may speak one at a time, and each person will have no more than three minutes to comment. And finally, council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. So. Let us now proceed. Um city staff? Do you have any report on this on this ordinance before us this evening?
I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that were changed on the second reading. The uh first is that there is a now a definition of premium cigar in section Y, which differentiates this product from little cigar and scar. And so the sale of little cigars and cigars is still prohibited in the ordinance. At section fourteen E three, but premium cigar is not. The only other change on this second reading is to um. Actually make the cap available licenses within the city limits. To be six, which accurately reflects the um current number. When we started this process, it was four, but um since that time, and that's not me making that sound.
That's right, sir.
Um. And when we started this process, there were four, and since then, the convenience store, which opened up uh on Harrison. Obtained a license, and there may be one other entity that obtains a license. So the intent was never to prohibit any existing businesses. So that number has been raised to six, and that um is reflected in the updated ordinance that I sent from the county as well. And those are the only two. Uh. Changes on second reading.
Other questions for city staff?
Some.
Okay, Councilmember Hill?
Uh yeah, you just mentioned that change from four to six. Uh in the. On page one thirty four. Um. Where it describes maximum number of tobacco product retail licenses. It says that the city of Leadville is limited to five.
Right, that I I updated. I sent out an updated county ordinance. Uh that was it. You're referring to what's referenced in the county ordinance, correct?
Yes. Yes, yes, it's on page one thirty four of the packet.
Correct. I sent out an updated email later uh that evening that that was a clerical error. And the county's ordinance was supposed to say six, and uh there is an up, there should be an updated ordinance in your uh inbox. That correctly states six, and that the total um number would be eight for the county and six for the city. Sorry.
Okay, I missed that. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm Christian. I believe you had a question too?
Yeah, I don't want to overcomplicate anything, but is there any? Um one will and then two um reasoning to potentially still stick to four, but grandfather in license these that currently listed or?
So that would reduce to four through attrition?
Yeah, through attrition without removing anyone's ability to continue to sell, but also not having a basis. Uh. I I don't know if that's a will um like. Should be considered or if it's too big of a change to consider today or?
Uh so it's always possible.
Sure.
Uh so. Your idea would be. Well, so I think what it would ha- I have to think this through. What it would probably end up being is that. There would be sticks, and then the ordinance would provide if any of those entities lost the license for any reason. It would be through attrition down to four.
But, yeah.
So that's always possible, and the issue would be the county would have to uh re. Uh notice, so we'd have to republish um renotice, and then everybody would have to have another.
It would be a substantial change today.
Yeah, and I should ask our city attorney, Ms. Laboon, if. We did that, we have to go back. I guess it's not such a substantial change. You'd have to go back to first reading, but I guess I'd ask our city attorney to weigh in on that.
I would think that that's something that could be done without going back to first reading, I you know, just in the. Interest of efficiency and moving things forward. I don't think it's required.
Yeah, I think on on occasions where we've made substantial revisions, so like, for example, the off highway vehicle ordinance, we went back to and. Basically started with the first reading. I don't think this is so substantial you'd need to do that, but the county would have to redo it.
Yeah.
Am I allowed to talk?
Oh, yes.
So that was my intention was to keep it up for um and then we went through the legal process. With the lawyers of like the State Department of Public Health, that Eric, who's kind of been alongside us this whole time, um we did legally couldn't happen under. What was existing.
Okay.
So public health does have an intention that if and when businesses close, we would like to to move the back down to our original.
So we can revise in the future.
Which is a lot of why we needed an ordinance and a regulation, because it will be much easier to revise the. Regulation. And.
Already thought about. And just to clarify, there are currently only five. There is an application pending. Is that? And that is standing that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you share the applications?
It was not my desire to share that publicly.
Oh.
Um. I would. Yeah, I'm happy to do so. Okay.
I see um. Yeah, this. Go ahead.
Yes. Thank you very much. I was just gonna mention that the regulations do state in that same section addressing the maximum number. And item four, that the local licensing authority has discretion about the approval or denial of any new tobacco product retail license application in the event that any one of the fourteen. Previously licensed licenses is either not renewed by the licensee or is revoked by the city. So that's additional discretion in terms of being able to reduce the number if if it's prudent to do so.
Well, thank you for that additional information.
Thanks for your forethought there. Yeah, no problem.
Um, Ms. Brown, did you want to add any information? I see that you're on line two.
Nope, they got it covered.
Okay, great. Are there other questions for um? For city staff or? Like county public health? All right, uh why don't we now move? I'm sorry, uh. Did? I can't see. Okay, Councilmember Hill?
Uh just uh. I just have a couple of things to point out. Well, first of all, I have a question. Uh does the state perform any compliance checks? Or is that just left to the local? Health departments?
The state is supposed to perform compliance checks, but historically they have not provided the number of compliance checks in Lake County that they are supposed to.
And I noticed that flav- flavored tobacco is defined in the regulation. Uh is that I? I didn't see that that was restricted in any way in the regulation. Is that correct?
Not at this time, no. Um getting this ordinance and regulations in place is the first step, and then I think. We would love in the future to pursue additional avenues such as banning flavored tobacco or things as that, but having this in place gets us that channel to do so in the future.
I noticed that um in the regulation. Um it is a requirement to be twenty one. In the in the regulations, in the local regulations, is a cor- a requirement to be twenty one to sell tobacco. But for the state, that is um. Our requirement is to be eighteen years old to be able to sell it. Is there any reason for the discrepancy there?
Yeah, this is an enhanced age requirement um so that we do not have um children under the age, well, not children, but people under the age of. Legal tobacco age of twenty one um persuaded to perhaps sell to their friends who are not twenty one. Um it just enhances that. Layer of protection um so that we are not selling to minors.
Uh does seem like that would negatively impact. Um workforce. Um, workforce. As a for instance, an eighteen-year-old wouldn't be able to work at the Circle K because he can't sell someone. Or because they can't sell someone a pack of smokes. That seems to be a negative impact to me.
They would still be able to work there, they would just need to have someone overage selling the tobacco. Um, most of those stores don't just typically have one person working at a time. Um, so a manager or someone of overage couldn't make that tobacco sale. Um, but when we did our outreach, um, and the survey, no one that responded to that, um, saw that as a. An issue or something that they wouldn't be able to overcome.
And in addition, in my experience working retail, they, most of the time, they prefer someone over, so anyways. Um, and do have procedures in it, um, in their own stores, at least Safeway and Family Dollar do.
So.
Out again, um, Tim, is seventy-three point nine percent of underage students tried to buy tobacco or vape products in a store? They were not refused because of their age and we feel like raising the age to twenty-one will help that. Because then, you know, if you have an eighteen-year-old and they have kids who are friends with, they're still in high school. They won't be so apt to sell to a high schooler, like if it's their friend or a cousin or whatever. So we're hoping that raising the age to twenty-one will help close that gap and bring that percentage down a little bit.
Okay, my perspective is, is I'm just. I think that some of this is going to nega- negatively affect some of our businesses. Which in turn will negatively affect revenue coming in, so. I'm just trying to, to understand. Um, why would we, why we would want to negatively affect businesses? The other thing I would point out is. Um, for a state license, it is a five hundred dollar annual fee. And for the local regulation, it will also be a five hundred dollar annual fee. Which will double the cost for a business to be able to sell tobacco. For a lot of these reasons, that I would be inclined to have a no vote on this. Uh, I'm not looking to negatively, negatively affect businesses.
Thank you, council member Hill. Um, Ms. Floyd, your hand is up, do you have another comment or? Is it just still up? Okay.
Sorry, I missed that, apologies.
Didn't wanna miss, didn't wanna miss a comment. Um, okay, let us uh, move on to public comment. I'd like to open this up for public comment, uh, to have an opportunity to talk about this ordinance. Is there anyone in chambers, see?
As a ex-smoker, um, both venues unfortunately, um. I, 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 I really, uh. She does, uh, this is the drug dealing aspect of government, we're, we're dealing drugs that are addictive and smoking people. Uh, and we're making money off of it and um. Somehow we view this as ethical, um, and we know that prohibition doesn't seem to work in the twenties, yeah, all thing, but. Or was that thirty? I, I, to possibly offset this thing, uh, I'm hoping that. There could be some of this income taken and. Put into um, some accelerated uh, education on the dangers of these addictions, thank you kindly.
Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to make public comments regarding this ordinance?
Mayor, I did receive a email from, uh, a gentleman by the name of Eric, uh, Hadorn. Uh, not particularly, I just wanted to be in the record.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to.
Okay, uh, yeah, so it sounds like all of us maybe individually received, um, this uh, letter from Eric Hadorn, uh, and it reads. Mayor Green, on behalf of the American Heart Association, I am re- reaching out regarding the public health of our community. Specifically youth use of tobacco and nicotine products. As you may know, the Colorado Legislature passed a statewide tobacco retail licensure in twenty twenty. While this is a great step to address the youth e-cigarette epidemic, laws are only as effective as they are enforced. And gaps still remain with retailer compliance checks on the local level. The American Heart Association thanks you for your leadership to establish a citywide tobacco retail license program to complement the state law. And improve retailer compliance rates in our community. A city tobacco retail license, T R L, is the only way to ensure all retailers in Leadville comply with the tobacco sale age. And don't continue to sell these harmful products to our youth. We need a city tobacco retail license to ensure all tobacco and e-cigarette retailers in Leadville are accounted for and comply with local, state, and federal tobacco laws. Benefits of a city tobacco retail license, um. A, uh, uh, are accounted for, well, wait, oh. A city T R L allows you to manage how many tobacco and e-cigarette retailers are operating in Leadville. A city T R L improves and strengthens retailer compliance rates of local, state, and federal tobacco laws. By ensuring all tobacco and e-cigarette retailers in Leadville receive two yearly unannounced compliance checks. A critical gap of state and federal enforcement efforts. A city T R L creates a self-financing mechanism to fund administration, retailer education and training. And enforcement efforts such as compliance checks. Improving retailer compliance checks is an integral step to reducing youth smoking and preventing a lifelong addiction to tobacco and nicotine products. But we can't do it without your help. The American Heart Association greatly appreciates the work you are doing for tobacco retail license ordinance for Leadville. Please let us know if there's any more information we can provide in the meantime, sincerely, Eric Hadorn, Colorado Government Relations Director. Okay, with that, there is no further public comment, could someone make a motion to close the public comment portion?
So, maybe one of them moves to close the public comment portion of this voting here. Five seconds.
All in favor? All right. Amongst council, is there any further discussion that anyone would like to enter?
Um, thanks to everybody for helping move this forward quickly.
Uh, council member Hill?
I'm sorry, I just have one more question. I noticed there is some advertising. Um, for state products in particular. That are visible, I wondered what kind of uh, outreach was going to be done to make sure. Um, that people were in compliance without being fined.
Um, Tim, so, me and the environmental, um, Alana, we are going to actually go out outreach from store to store. We are going to hand out the application, we have educational material that we are going to be giving them. Um, answer any questions that they have, so we will actually be person to person with these retailers and make sure that we speak to management. If we can't speak to management at that time, we will go back, but we wanna be able to make sure that we can answer any questions that they have and give them all the information. And kind of, you know, let them know about the signs, like right away, this cannot be here, you have to move this. If this cannot be advertised in this manner, so we do have all that paperwork together. Um, you know, we're, we're here to help them and to educate them, our goal is not to just try to throw fines at them. Our goal is to educate them so that everybody passes their compliance check. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
So, the further discussion. All right, then I would go to a motion.
Council member Luna Lam moves to approve ordinance number nine, series of twenty-five four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Leadville adding a new chapter, five point five two, entitled five of the Leadville municipal code regarding tobacco product retail. Retailer licensing on second reading.
Um, sentence. Roll call please.
Council member Edwards.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Green.
Yes.
Uh, council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
No.
Uh, Mayor Proten Thar.
Yes.
Uh, council member Luna Lea.
Yes.
And council member Best?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for all your work on this.
Thank you all very much, it was a huge undertaking for everyone involved and I really appreciate the collaboration with everybody.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a great.
Good night. Thank you, Jennifer, good night.
Night.
Um, okay, let's go move on to our final action item of the evening. Which is sort of a formal declaration of uh, dedicating our remaining ARCA and slash funds. Uh, so prior, you know, we had a couple of discussions about where we would like to direct the remaining two hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Um, of ARCA funds that were, um, uh. That were, that were essentially cut out for the city of Leadville, um, we have. We have already expended four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-two. Um, that mostly went to local nonprofits who provide services that have helped offset the impact of the COVID pandemic as well as employee retention bonuses. Um, there are at this point, um, of variety, uh, there's four basic. Categories of things that, um, we can, we can dedicate these funds to, those are replacing lost revenue. Responding to the public health and economic impacts of COVID nineteen. Providing premium pay to eligible workers and investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. And in the final ruling, uh, of, um, the depart- uh, the treasury department, they go into great detail over. What possibly can, you know, like, expanding what would be included under these, um, four giant categories. Uh, we have talked about a number of, um, items that we would like to direct these remaining funds to. Um, and our city attorney was kind enough to share with me of, of, a variety of, um. Resolutions that other cities have done to just kind of get an idea of how they, how they frame it. These ranged everywhere from, here's the history of ARCA, this is where the funds come from, this is how much we have, and we're gonna use those. Like not naming anything particular to very detailed lists of who we get what, um, so. What I have here is just a proposed resolution which includes the things that we have discussed, um. Dedicating ARCA funds to, um, I wanna thank Mayor Proton Thar for the very convenient. Spreadsheet that he provided at our last meeting, uh, looking over options and. That's what I've got, we've gotta do this by December thirty-first, so. Tonight. Tonight.
Unless you want me in the mother day.
Yeah, no, no. So what are people's thoughts or is there any feedback?
Did you make a determination about a contract grant writer?
Yes, so that is not one of the, uh, that would not be covered under any one of those four categories. But I do, well, that's a side story, I'll talk about it in the news.
When, um, so, I'm looking at page one fifty-five where, where we got the proposal there and. Um, if we pass this with those, um, designations. That, does that fulfill the requirement for the allocation deadline? Yes, and then, um, what would be the process going forward to say decide how we? Use the economic development, um, money, for example? Would we revisit that in the new year and?
I think we can simply make a decision, I don't think we have to pass a specific resolution. The important part of this, like, this is our needing the requirement to say, this is the money we have. Here's, here's how we plan to use it, but the really important thing is in the recording. You know, like, we have spent it on this and then you have to check all these boxes to make sure that what you have expended on. Spent it upon is, uh, an eligible category.
And so then, within that eligible category, like, how will we decide? Um, how we use that fifty thousand for economic development?
Well, I think we put on suit and fight or something, I, you know, like, I, I think that is just our discretion.
So, we are fully, you've often decided what projects we may or may not entertain.
Okay.
Uh, you know.
Twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, I guess, you were right.
Okay, um, maybe another way to ask my question more directly is. If we approve this fifty K for economic development, are we approving fifty K for retail strategies or is that still a conversation?
That, I mean, that was, that was the thought process going into this after, especially after having the, um. The presentation, um, from them, I. That was a thought process going, but I didn't wanna label.
Yeah.
Things specifically.
So, I, we, we, I've had discussions with the Food Access Coalition about next steps and so. The, the first step was to have retail strategies made a presentation, give you some materials, have some time to digest that and think about it. And have other questions that are presented to us. Uh, the, the next step is that the Food Access Coalition is going to have a fuller presentation on. Uh, the local need and some information that they've gathered over the years and Ms. Gwynne was here to present some of that information. But to have that presentation to you on the twenty-first and then at some point. Correct, yes, very, yes, not missing, no more meetings. Uh, and then, uh, I think at some point we'll ask, should the staff bring forth a contract for consideration of retail strategies or? What, what do you want, because I am going to make it very clear that we need economic development.
So, so.
And so, there can be other ideas, but we'll, we'll continue along a path until you give us direction.
To be direct, we, like, we will have to consider at some point if we decide to go down that path, a retail strategies. Separate resolution or whatever.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, it's not set in stone for that, it's just purely like a hole for this type of. And specifically, council will have the opportunity to vote, yea or nay, on the retail strategy.
Yes, well, and I hope before that, if the council wants something else to be considered, you would let us know.
Yeah.
Because I, what I don't want is for us to put a ton of work into having the Food Access Coalition come and meet and do that. And have the council come and say, but I want you to consider bringing something else to us. If you would like something else to be brought to you, please let us know so we can do that work or. Or let us know something else you would like us to pursue.
Council member Hill?
I would have the same question for the emergency cell shelter. Um, we haven't had a presentation on that or had any details presented on that, so is, is that similarly a placeholder? For housing projects or, or the shelter?
Correct, and, and, and as we discussed previously, you know, like, if something, like, either if council votes. Contrary to it or something goes awry with the emergency shelter, I didn't wanna pigeonhole us into. We're dedicating funds to this thing that no longer exists, we have to have an outlet.
And I guess the same would be true for all these categories, really, it looks like.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess the White County Community Fund is pretty specific. But the other ones are in the same ballpark of being general and then we'd have to decide on a specific allocation, right?
And those two about community funding just got moved out of our budget this year. To just take advantage of the remains, because they do, as not habits that fill in many of the gaps that were, that were in part. Created or, or exacerbated by the pandemic.
Going back to the administrator's comment on, or, or question on the economic development portion.
Going back to the administrators comment on or or question on the economic development portion. I think uh Mayor, you said that that money can't be contributed to the tourism panel.
Yes, so we have to be careful um in contributing money that essentially supports. Business as usual, like our ongoing operations. You can't use it for whatever ongoing operations are.
It would be nice to know from administration before we have the vote on retail strategies if there are any other local. Economic development opportunities. If there is something else out there.
Hmm.
It would be vital to know if that was available, please.
Yes, I I made that's my one question would be what type of economic development?
Yeah, I I'm not, I I think that's too broad of a request to staff. I don't know even where to begin with.
Well, again, that's fine. If you come back to us and say there are no other options, this is where you have to spend your money. That's an answer too.
Yeah.
Uh but if there was another, if there was another option that was more local than a. Nationally. A nationally broad company, I would like to know what that other option would be.
For doing what?
Economic development in Leadville.
Just any economic development.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Just any old economic development.
And I I think maybe a reasonable thing.
Know if there's an option.
Either through uh Councilmember Thomas or through the city administrator. Is uh just to acquire the EDC. What have you heard? Is there something bubbling on the on the back burner that's gonna come forth that will need support? Um I think so far, personally, what I have heard is the answer to that is no, but.
And that's great. It's just nice to have that and asked and answered in that. That was my only. Concern. If there was another option, I'd wanna make sure that it was. Put forward.
Yeah, and I think I think it's a fair question if there uh, you know, Ms. Box has said there's there are other entities that can can do that work. I think uh I think. Well, the reason I ask for the purpose is this this started out with a a not just. Any old economic development. The idea began with this. Two years ago with Mark Gwen and I about the Food Access Coalition and attracting a second grocery store.
Hmm.
So I think that this idea is broader than that, which is really helpful. But that's why I I said sort of just any economic development. I think one of the consistent messages that that. Ms. Gwynn has heard and and I think I mentioned this too from. Elaine Elberding, who's doing a research, was doing a research project. The one thing that kept bubbling up that our community wanted. Was better access to food and grocery. And so it's. In a sense, it's not purely economic development for the city. Yes, it is, but it's also something the community has been clamoring for for a while. And so that's kind of why I asked economic development for what.
I was gonna say we also have a great need for increased lodging, especially off the Silver Keenness.
Then then make that question more specific. It would be interesting to know if there was. A more local option for a company that could help locate lodging or food.
In our, in our discussions with with Adam DeCharme, who also had the opportunity to meet Lacy when she was out here. Um his feedback was. These are two really big important needs that this community has and like. He doesn't really have the bandwidth to take on a project of that magnitude.
Understood, and yes, you're absolutely right about that, yeah.
And and otherwise, uh should like uh if we're when we talk economic development, I mean. We justify childcare as economic development, which I think it is.
Yeah.
Um and that would be a project. So if this this question, the reason I think it'd be important to get a little more specific if you did. Is because of how I honestly can't get and we can qualify like. You know, similarly, do we really for childcare? Like, do you want to qualify that? So.
Well, then and we we do have an econo- economic development corporation. It is currently. Not effective. But if there was a way to spend this money to make something like that more effective, hyper locally. It would be nice to know that that was an option. It's. Uh the the but that is not the right venue currently, and I understand that.
This is why I asked one of my questions. I think that's another question. What are they gonna be there? We're not. We're not hiring them to figure out the need is. We know what the need is. We're hiring them to actually get. Company that is the best fit to actually open up here. And I believe that's why Councilwoman Thomas was asking what their track record is on that. Um and we still don't actually know. So we were talking in a break that. Okay, so one of those uh small towns they got two like a. A same lot and something else to move in. Well, how many did they try to get to move in that didn't? We didn't. We don't know that. Like she could not answer the success.
I can ask her to 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 identify that. I think she what she did say is that uh. They can get you something.
Hmm.
That's not the issue. The question is, what do you want?
Yeah.
And so I think that's her point is how do you measure success? Because they can. They can probably plug and play. The question is, is that the right fit for us? Uh I but I can ask her some of that information and data. I um.
I'm sure they must track their a success metric internally. It would just be nice to know. How many things that they intended to place, did they actually place?
Right, and I think what I'm gonna tell you, it's very similar to hiring and and what I'm gonna say to you is it's very similar to hiring the consultants we hired for our police chief. They're not gonna tell you. We're gonna get you a person who's perfect to sit in that chair. What we're gonna do is we're gonna do all the legwork that's necessary to present you with your choices and it's up to you to pick. Now, does K R W place uh candidates quite frequently? Yes. Does retail strategies place retail quite frequently? Yes. But I think what the issue is is. They're gonna give us options and and we can pick. And if we choose that none of those, none of the people who we think would they think would fit here and are interested in us do we want. Then we may not have success, but it's not because we weren't presented with options.
Right, but if we're going to pick them, we want to know what their track record is.
Yep.
And it's for us to ask.
Yeah, yeah, and I can ask her to provide that information, certainly.
Tim Melas.
Councilmember Hill.
I think this is turning into a debate over retail strategies, which is probably for a later date. I think the question that we have tonight is do we want that placeholder for economic development?
Yes.
Getting a little in the weeds.
Thank you for bringing us back down to earth. Councilmember Hill.
Yeah, but and that does answer my original question and I do support this um allocation. Has that lined here?
Likewise.
Do we need to refine the definition of economic development? Because Christian, as you pointed out, it could mean daycare. Again.
I I think that's right.
I I think the in those further discussions, what we just need to be cautious about is going back. Looking at the final rule and saying.
Yeah.
Does this, does this qualify? Will this be eligible? Okay, the specific thing. Okay, so we don't need to refine it now, correct?
No, and I think it's beneficial for us to keep it this.
Generic.
Yeah, my last question on distribution. Originally, the employee retention bonuses were closer to a hundred thousand dollars and they've been cut back to the thirty eight thousand dollar.
That's just what was left over.
I will, I understand that. Uh so will employee retention bonuses then across the city be. Cut back by quantity?
Yeah, so the the original plan with the employer retention notices was for them to go on for three years and that's been complete. So for me, this is icing on the cake. It will not match the prior years. It's literally using up. The remainder of our funds, so we don't leave money on the table.
And the intention is not to carry that forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the intention is not to carry that forward ongoing.
Correct. Did we ever hear back from the engineering firm that you were talking to on what a plan would roughly cost? Yeah, and again, it it's really dependent on. Where like the scope, you know, so if we wanted a plan for, say, the East Twelve thing, we'll probably talking. Tens of thousands of dollars. If you want something broader, like it can easily get into hundreds. The cool thing about this is. Is that we can potentially use this for like matching funds if we need to. Um for or just contribution if we need to to show commitment that we're we're doing part of this this fee. Um I'll talk about it a little bit in my mayor's report, but I think that there is plenty of um. Even if like. The clouds part and we get this planning grant that can cover like. Not only the city of Leadville, but West Park and some of these these flood prone areas. Another person, the county, you know, like there's other stuff looking.
For sure.
Okay. All right. Um Steve.
Um can I beg in double tears to be a little long-winded on this statement?
Okay, yes, but I it is a little harder to hear if you don't go into the lectern.
Okay. To acknowledge uh Delta granting on the.
I'll just tell you upfront, like you you wouldn't be eligible for a senior mark.
Yeah. My situation really quickly, uh the emergency shelter and but my focus here is uh. The uh. Retail strategies. Uh again, the reason I come here is I'm terrified they. And I'm gonna be honest, sit down. Um. I saw how uh business that I was spent seven days a week were three years. Went quickly down the drain because of actions of the previous administration. And I can see my house chipping that same way. Um moving on to emergency shelter. Um. And I'll tie this into retail strategies. Um I would really like to see um. The uh. Uh surveillance be not kept for thirty days. I would like to see the surveillance kept for a year or two. And I would like to see law enforcement have an open line to that surveillance without having to ask for permission. To look at that surveillance. Um I've been collecting articles from the newspaper about how time and time again caregivers have failed. To uphold their duties and how uh they've abused their charges. So um moving on to retail strategies. Um. Rebecca Thomas's, Councilmember Rebecca Thomas's uh comment, uh I mean question about asking for um. There's a success rate percentage for a thousand communities. Uh hit me exactly what she said. I I understood what she was talking about. Um because I got the feeling when I watched the presenter talking about, it was like a. A used car salesman talking about all their satisfied customers, but not the dissatisfied customers. So we're being sold a product, which is understandable. This is business. But. When they start, when she talked about what's obtainable, feasible, and what's practical as as far as gaining real estate. Um and then her. One of her things said land property acquisitions, um zoning, annexation, right away, et cetera. Um I got to thinking about my opening comments when I was at the uh renewal uh. Initial uh when they approved it was that uh urban renewal was a. Uh uh another term for that was D grow renewal. And um so tying this into this land acquisition thing. Um I think that. The success rate is very important. But I think it depends on what type of. Counsel we have and what their values are as far as protecting members of the community. And so if the council is all realtors, it's going, yeah, we wanna make money on real estate and. You know, yeah, sure, we can utilize the eminent domain and and uh. You know, rezoning and all this to take property for these businesses that we wanna have here to make money, more money on. So the event is going to be. I I think the success rate that they might have had was with communities. That were distant from their constituency, but were more interested in making a. A boom town or something. Do you understand what I'm trying to say in a roundabout way? So. Um I was really um put off. Like I was when I asked the question at the workshop work session for. The shelter and the lady responded with a long winded thing about we're not gonna be uh. Monitoring the bathrooms and things like that. She didn't answer my spec- question specifically. And the same thing. This presenter did not answer Rebecca Thomas's uh answer succinctly or specifically. She went on about the whole took us on a on a long ride there. So this is a business that wants to make money, retail strategies on selling us a package, fine. But if that package depends on. If we're gonna be selling off our community so we can, uh so that that's why I'm trying to get that get that perspective across. Thank you kindly for listening.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, is there further discussion on resolution number sixty two?
None, I would entertain a motion.
To approve resolution number sixty two, series of twenty twenty four. The resolution of the city and council of the city of Leadville declaring ARCA as follow.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
Thank you. Uh Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Count uh Mayor Green.
Yes.
Uh Mayor Proten Tharp.
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lea.
Yes.
Uh Councilmember Hill. Uh Councilmember Best.
I abstain uh due to a potential conflict of interest.
And Councilmember Thomas.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for the discussion. Um technically, we do want a public comment. Hey. Let's just move on to the to the mayor's report. Um I have a couple of things. Uh one is. That I know you have all been waiting with bated breath um to receive the evaluation uh form for. The city administrator, because it's that time here. Um I am basically done with it, but I do need to look it over. I just learned recently that. When I get done with something, I'm excited. I send it out. I do it with lots of typos. So would like the opportunity to look that over in detail. Um. There has been a number of people have approached me and asked for a three sixty evaluation, which is. More than just counsel and your and the direct reports of the city administrator. But also amongst the community since our our city interacts with a lot of different stakeholders. Um and I think this is. Be interesting, you know, be good information gathering. Um and so what I would like. Is because uh different people have approached me with different suggestions. If you would. Submit to me your suggestions for what stakeholders in our community you think should. Uh have the opportunity to evaluate our city administrator, please send them to me. Um you know my email. Okay, my hope is to uh to give this about a month of of time. To do and uh my plan is to have a a report for you all in the beginning of February. Uh I was gonna talk about something else. Oh, the other thing is that um so I met recently with Beth Lenz, who is the grant navigator uh working with you at Call. The council of governments to which we belong. Um she is the one who pointed me in the direction of this raised grant for. Uh uh looking for federal funding from the Department of Transportation for infrastructure projects. Um. She has, she's been working with the county with uh for their safer streets for all grants, which they. Um which they did not see and feels like in general when we can work together with the county. Uh that wor- that applying for larger grants like this is is a real strength. The additional strength of this is that. In Leadville, there's a lot of different, in 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 any town that's applying, there's a lot of different things that they look at. Um we within the city limits do not have a whole lot of qualifications in terms of um. Uh uh communities that are. That are at a disadvantage or areas of persistent poverty and things like that. But the county does, like it looks like a domed hole. If you look at the map. Of all the different things they consider, um but Leadville is like this domed hole in the middle of of the map. Um and so it may increase our opportunity. Um, and so it may increase our opportunity both to, to. To be successful in having a grant, a grant awarded, but also in being more comprehensive. So that we're not just, say, looking at improving the stormwater drainage along East Twelve Street. But not upstream where the county land is and not downstream where the county land is where a lot of, where a lot of the flooding is. There's just a lot of rationale, I think, for working together and having a more comprehensive solution that benefits the community as a whole. Um, and so to that end, Beth, uh, pointed out that the state has, um, some, uh, assistance. They, they provide assistance, uh, with grant writing. And so one of them is something like, you know, we can pay for like fifty thousand dollars to write this grant for us, they have specific experience with this grant. Um, but the other is that we can have grant assistance. And we need her recommendation to refer grant writing assistance to, um. To Catherine Greer at the county and, and myself and work, work with us to kind of put the finishing touches on this. And so I was like, yes, yes, please. So, um, hopefully, we're gonna get another, a little high level assistance with, um, with this grant. And that is all I have.
Is it state, state funding?
It's, it's a state grant writing assistance, but the grant is through Department of Transportation at a federal level.
That's great. I know, right?
Okay, other, that's all the points.
Yeah, there are a few. Um, as you all know, um, President Biden has, uh, sometime ago passed. In an infrastructure act, basically heavily increasing funds. We're finally seeing the, uh, results of that. Um, in the housing world. Um, there has been a heavy increase in rebates and other assistances, uh, for community members. Um, including level community members for a wildly diverse group of incomes. Um, all at different levels with different needs, of course, but still widely available to anyone. Um, in terms of income, so I highly encourage, uh, anyone and everyone who is interested or needs. Uh, to replace their fifty-year-old furnace, for example, which I'm sure is most of us, um, to. Uh, potentially consider reaching out to us at C four. Um, to speak to us, uh, to kind of get a little bit better idea as to what programs we could potentially help y'all out with. Um, again, it's varying levels of service for varying levels of, uh, AMI, so there's no. Real, don't, don't consider your income period, and please do share that widely. Um, I think it's gonna be important that in this next year, we utilize that as much as we possibly can. Um, because once those funds are gone, uh, I don't, I feel strongly that. This new administration is gonna double down on maybe of that. Um, so any and every person who you all may feel like a neighbor or friend. My benefit from this, please do send them over. There's, like I said, many programs that can be of assistance.
For energy efficiency?
For really anything related to their home, we could have a discussion. Yes, of course, energy, uh, is a main focus. But don't, you know, shy away from it. A lot of these homes, like, for example, have fifty-year-old or completely no insulation. Um, for example, and it would be very helpful for a lot of homeowners to kind of give an assessment of their home to see what they're working with. Um, so if they just have a desire to improve their home in any way, shape or form, or have complaints about their home, heating or anything. I would strongly encourage, uh, them to reach out to us, um. There's a website, I email myself a Richie, and we can work with you all, however it makes sense. But I just wanted to share that as widely as possible, since it's going to be a very, very valuable resource. Just to clarify, I don't personally like get any kickback or anything, so there's no, I'm getting the interest.
Christian could be used to supplement the Parkville project trying to remove leaded pipes?
Um, probably not, uh. There is other funds from the, from Parkville, is what I'm saying.
But not to pay for the whole thing, I think.
Right, no, they, they do some sort of assistance. Potentially.
And can, can the city be a, a applicant?
It seems like a little bit bigger conversation that we'd have to have with Richie, but one that we kind of won't have any yet, so we should.
What about slurf?
So, yeah, uh, that's whether.
Thank you. Are there other council reports?
Yeah, I got one. I'm very pleased to report that the city was successful in getting their first grant from the State Historic Fund. We got forty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars to start work on City Hall.
One quarter, that isn't damp. Congratulations, it's just fantastic.
Very exciting.
Yeah. Um, other council reports?
Um, on January sixth, I'll be going to a meeting with, uh, folks from the county and. School district to continue that conversation about the indoor recreation building facilities and how they overlap. So I know many folks have expressed wanting that coordination to continue and, um, that's the next meeting.
Thank you.
On that, yeah.
Other reports? You're not gonna tell us about Grace?
It was great, thanks.
All right. Uh, let's then move on to the meetings planner. Um, I would first like to point out that the Lura Board meeting is not on the second. It's actually been proposed for the ninth, Thursday, the ninth, at six P M. Um, and also that the city holiday party is permanent.
Uh, fourteenth, the new, the whole date, new.
Need to add that. Or it's a work, a current work session.
Work session and remove it from the sixth.
And that one's gonna be a seven P M start, correct?
Yeah, correct. All right, other modifications to the meetings planner? All right then, last comments.
Nice and closely.
At nine twenty-five.